Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 21st, 2017. We did meet earlier this evening in a special meeting to interview for an opening with our Napa County Local Food Advisory Council, and we will be reporting out on that interview later this evening. So I'll go ahead and call to order our regular meeting and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Mohler?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. And I'd like to invite our retired District Attorney Gary Lieberstein to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have adoption of our agenda, and I know we're going to be pulling items from the consent calendar, but are there any other changes to the agenda, Michelle?
None.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda then?
So moved?
In a second.
Second.
I think that was Councilmember Dorman. We'll say, we'll go with Dorman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Well, we can officially vote on our screens. So let's get first to one of the world's longest retirement celebrations. But I wanted to make sure that even though our recently retired outgoing District Attorney, Gary Lieberstein, has officially been represented and recognized at the county and elsewhere, I wanted to make sure that we as a town and a council had our opportunity to do the same with you face-to-face. So if you would join me at the podium, I'd like to share with the audience what I presented to you at your most recent retirement celebration.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
No name tag. I noticed. That's right. I barely recognized you. So I'm going to go ahead and read this certificate of appreciation in recognition of contributions on behalf of the residents of the town of Yountville honoring Gary Lieberstein. And I realize that you served in multiple capacities for over 30 years, but this is to recognize specifically your years of service as the District Attorney. For nearly two decades of public service as Napa County's District Attorney, the Town Council thanks you for your tireless efforts to combat gang violence, to protect victims' rights, to provide support for our seniors, and for acting on the behalf of the safety and welfare of the residents and visitors of Napa County. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Dunbar and members of the council. Yeah, I haven't worn a tie in, well, since the end of December. It's been my true honor and privilege to serve this community, as you stated, Mayor, for over 31 years in the Napa County District Attorney's Office and the last 18 as District Attorney. And it just felt like the timing was right to move into the next chapter. I'm kind of calling this intermission. I'm way too young and have way too much energy to stop, but it's time to maybe do something a little different. And even though I've left the District Attorney's Office, and I may add in extremely, extremely capable hands, and Allison Haley, our first female District Attorney in our history, who I truly believe has every ability to do as well or better than I did, and if that occurs, I think that's the best legacy I could leave behind, and a fabulous office of men and women that will continue to serve for many years. While I've left the office, I haven't left the community. And I know, Mayor Dunbar, you were at my retirement celebration, which was up at the Hall's Residence last Sunday, apparently the only sunny day in about a month, so we were very fortunate. And I was able to announce that as a result of my retirement and doing my retirement celebration as a benefit for the Family Justice Center, I've been able to raise over $60,000 in founding sponsorships. So that's the next big project on our horizon that many of us are working on, and I don't intend to abandon. This basically being a single location where victims of family violence can go for services, everything from legal services, housing needs, mental and physical health needs, and everything else that comes with being in crisis. At the core, victims of domestic violence, stalking, human trafficking, but eventually child victims as well. So at some point, over time, we'll fold the Courage Center into the Family Justice Center and also for elders. And we're in the midst of discussion with Olay Health, and we believe we're going to have a collaboration where we'll have an initial opening with the new building Olay Health is putting forward in the South County. It'll be a small space, but it'll be the beginning of changing that paradigm to where instead of having victims in their time of crisis have to chase all over the city and county for services, there'll be a single place where we're going to come to them in a single collaborative and healthy spot. So the idea is a social justice center. This isn't going to be run by government. It'll be probably an independent nonprofit. Currently, we're under the umbrella of News, but that will change as we form our own board. And it's just the next step in us taking care of those less vulnerable in our communities. So I wanted to be sure you had a little update on that. We have an incredible collaboration already between private nonprofit, Gasser Foundation funded us for $40,000 for our initial study tour and strategic planning, which was held last summer, and they continue to be supportive. And we have collaboration between government services, between nonprofits, as I mentioned, such as News, Mentos, Aldea, Napa, North Bay Legal Services, and many others in law enforcement. And so it's something that's time has arrived for Napa County. We're not reinventing the wheel, but we think we can do it differently, better to serve the needs of our citizens. So stay tuned on that, and myself and others will continue to bring you updates, certainly as a private citizen from my standpoint. But as I said, I intend to be involved, and thank you for this honor tonight, and I love coming up to your town. This is, you know, one of the brightest spots in the county and always fun, and now I can just come and play.
That's right. Gary, thank you so much for all your years of service. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a very special opportunity tonight to recognize two international rock stars of the culinary world. In case you have not heard, it's kind of hard to believe you have not heard, that among us here in Yountville, we have the gold medal winners of the International Baku Store Culinary Competition. And it's my great pleasure to invite them up to the podium and receive a proclamation where we're able to recognize their amazing efforts. The first-ever culinary team from the United States to win this competition in its 30-year history. So if I could please have the chefs come join me at the podium. And you have a little something with you.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't want it to fall off.
Mayor, thank you.
Great to see you again.
Of course.
So bear with me, you did a lot of stuff, so I'm going to go ahead and give a little background on the competition, and then I'd love to hear from both of you. So this is a proclamation for Team USA's 2017 Baku Store Competition Gold Medal. Whereas the Baku Store originated in 1987 from the vision of legendary chef Paul Baku to bring together young chefs from around the world to compete for two days in an attempt to win the most prestigious gastronomy contest in the world. Whereas every two years, teams from 24 countries earn their way to the final cooking competition in Lyon, France, the home city of Chef Baku, by winning their respective national and continental selection events. The competition has been called the Culinary Olympics based on its international participation and global status. Whereas in 2008, chefs Daniel Boulud, Thomas Keller, and Jerome Baku formed the Baku Store USA Foundation to support and fund Team USA. Since then, the foundation evolved to become Mentor with the mission to inspire and instruct young culinary talent and to preserve the traditions and quality of classic cuisine in America. Whereas in 2015, Team USA made the podium for the first time in history, winning the silver medal under the leadership of chef Philippe Tessier, who put his experience to use as head coach of Team USA this year. Whereas Team USA 2017 was led by head chef Matthew Peters and commish Harrison Tyrone, who trained for more than a year in a kitchen designed to match the arena stage in Lyon, where they refined concepts, perfected timing to match the five-hour and 35-minute contest time, and honed their culinary skills. Whereas to celebrate the 30th anniversary of the contest, which was held on January 25th, the theme for the main dish to be presented on a platter for the Baku Store 2017 was based on the famous Lyon recipe...
I can't speak French. Oh, blé de braise, or... And then it's... crêvisse.
Or chicken and crayfish.
It's a little easier in English.
There you go. Whereas Team USA President and longtime Yountville resident chef Thomas Keller has mentored and employed dozens of Team USA members over the years in his Michelin three-star restaurants, the French Laundry in Yountville, and Per Se in New York. Now therefore be it resolved that I, John F. Dunbar, as Mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby recognize Team USA's 2017 Baku Store Competition Gold Medal winners and honor chefs Matthew Peters and Harrison Tyrone for their achievement at the highest level of the culinary world. Can we stand over here and get a little photo? You got to take that. Sir, let's just spin around a little bit.
Share a little bit about one of his life with everybody. Yeah, of course. Wow. First of all, thank you. Thank you, everybody here as well and the town of Yountville. I've been back and forth between Yountville now twice, so this is the second time. It keeps getting better. So the first time, obviously, I had the opportunity to work for the French Laundry, and then at that point, I was able to kind of see what this competition was all about. Clearly, Tim Hollingsworth, who was the chef du cuisine here quite some time ago, he was one of the first competitors that really led the way. Yeah, so, you know, from that point, that was pretty much the introduction to the competition. And then clearly, having that opportunity to work with Chef Keller, gave us the skills to kind of do that. And then once chef Philippe Tessier, which has also been living here in Yountville for 10 years?
Eight years.
Eight years? You know, he was the first one to really get Team USA on the podium. He was the one that really kind of broke the barrier for us all. So knowing that he was going to come back and coach this year was great news. So that kind of inspired me because I had the opportunity not only to work with him, but to become good friends with him. So at that point, we felt like that was a good matchup. So I was excited to come out and compete for 2017. And with those tools and obviously the great support from Chef and the Mentor Foundation, and then all the chefs that competed before us that kind of paved the way, really gave us that opportunity to achieve goals this time. So, you know, I want to thank them and everybody here as well.
Chef and Harrison. Go ahead and move that microphone your way, Harrison. Come on, we're not letting you out of here.
I want to say something. I learned how to speak in front of people.
I want to thank you very much, Mayor, and the town of Yountville.
Thank you.
Well done.
Chef Keller, would you like to share any thoughts about your amazing team?
Where did you start? I saw where you left off.
You pretty much got in right when I started.
Right when you started, okay. You know, it's been a true honor these past 23 years to see the growth of Yountville and what's happened here. You know, certainly, we just lost one of our beloved Don Schmidt a week and a half ago. So, you know, just in memory of him and all he had done, not only for me, but I think for our town, you know, just a tribute to that. Yountville has been home to so many different things in the past 23 years, and certainly I am proud to be part of this community. And certainly, when I see young individuals come into our community, like Harrison, like Matthew, like Philippe before, his family with Rachel, it makes the community that much richer. And it's a wonderful thing to be just part of that. The Baku Store began for me almost 10 years ago. It was our fifth challenge. It happens every two years, as you may know. We got started late on the 2009 challenge, so we didn't get involved until December of 2008 was our first national competition. And we have had three chefs from our town compete on the world stage. First one was Timothy Hollingsworth in 2009. Paul Baku, who's been a great chef, a great mentor, who changed, and I'm sure many of you don't know, but changed the way we eat, not just in America but around the world. He really forged a path in the early '60s through the '70s that exemplified what chefs are today, and we're really thankful for his guidance and his leadership in that way. An extraordinary man. I was very fortunate to meet him years ago on a plane trip from Paris and to speak with him about a story that I read about him in one of my first cookbooks, and which was an amazing moment for me. So when he called his son and said, "You have to get a team together to really support the U.S. culinary team so that they can reach the podium in my lifetime." And so Jerome, who is the son who lives in Florida, called one of his close friends, Daniel Boulud. Both of them being French, needed the American to kind of round it out. They called me. And Daniel called me. I was in New York at the time, and he said, "Chef Paul is going to call you in a few moments and ask you to be the president of the U.S. team." And what do you say to a chef? We say the same thing we've said since we walked into a kitchen. "We chef." You just never say no to your chef. It just doesn't happen. And we cobbled together a team in 2008 to compete in 2009, and we reached sixth place, and we were very, very happy to do that. Over the next two competitions in 2011, 2013, we didn't fare so well. We were really starting to get worried, not worried because of our time and our dedication, but worried about Chef Paul and how old he was getting. And it really weighed heavily on my mind, once again, to be able to fulfill the promise that we made him in 2008, which was to get on the podium, get the USA on the podium. In 2015 or 2014, when we started looking for that national candidate, we were kind of rock bottom. Nobody applied for the candidacy. And Phil Tessier and I set out in the back of the French Laundry, as I had done many countless times with chefs over these years, and we talked, and he expressed his desire to be the candidate for the USA. And of course, I applauded that, and he became the candidate for USA. We won silver in 2015, the first time in 28 years that we had reached the podium. The first time, an extraordinary moment for the USA. I had the moment, I had the opportunity to stand with Chef Paul in front of his stove at the Aberg in Lyon, where he flies the American flag above his restaurant in tribute to America, because during World War II, he was wounded, and he was taken to a U.S. Army Field Hospital, where they saved his life and gave him a blood transfusion. And he says to this day that he has American blood running through his veins, and that's why he is the only French chef who has the American flag above their restaurant. He has a great affection and appreciation and gratitude to our country for saving not only his life, but saving his country. And I stood with him that day. We won silver, and I told him, I said, "We fulfilled our obligation. We fulfilled our promise. We got on the podium." And he looked at me with a sly smile, and he said, "Thomas, gold." And I sheepishly walked away and said, "Damn. We've got to come back in 2017." So when Matthew came to us and asked us to apply, of course, we supported that. He did a tremendous job in the national competition, succeeding there and winning to become the U.S. chef for the 2017 competition. As he pointed out, Phil Tessier became our coach, Harrison Tyrone became his comie, Martin Kastner, who was our designer in 2015, came back as our designer in 2017. And we put together a team that was, I believe, as the results here, was unbeatable. And so from 2008, when I first got that call till today, my focus, my goal, my hopes, my aspirations, and my dreams have been to satisfy that promise that we made to Chef Paul in 2008. And I want to say to these young gentlemen here, who without them, we would have not been able to fulfill that promise. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. And Chef, I'm not going to let you get away. Since you've joined the team, I'm going to come down, we're going to redo the photo.
Okay.
The Yountville Sun wants a complete team shot.
Okay. Sorry if I was a little long-winded there.
You've earned it. Earned a couple minutes at the podium. This podium.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so if we could just, here, let's, somebody hold that up.
If I put you... All right. All right.
I did so much to earnest.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chef.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chef. Congratulations, Chef.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Congratulations. You've covered me already.
Congratulations, Chef.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chef.
Congratulations, Chef.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You've covered me already.
Congratulations, Chef.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Chef.
Well done.
Very fun.
So no pressure at all left in your careers, gentlemen? Thank you very much for being here tonight. Congratulations again. Next, we are going to invite public comment on any item that is not on tonight's council agenda. If anyone in the audience would like to come forward and address the council, now would be the time. Hello? Might need to lower that mic just a little bit.
Hello? Okay. Thank you. My name is Debbie Welborn, and I live at 2910 Lincoln Street. I'm a little nervous, so I'm going to read what I would like to speak. I'm very concerned about the town's plan to lease town property to businesses for their employee parking so that the businesses can expand their operational capacity. The pieces of land the town is considering leasing are the lot south of the Veterans Park and the west side of the Yountville Community Park. These are public spaces and should be kept as public spaces and not leased out to private businesses. If a business cannot support its parking on its own land, then it indicates that they should not be able to expand. Parking is an ongoing issue in this town, and with ever-growing tourism, that demand will grow. A year ago, the parking was almost doubled at the north end of the town next to the Yountville Community Park. At that time, the town also wanted to take green space from the largest and most historical park in Yountville to add even more parking for tourists and employees. The Yountville Park is a very popular local and tourist destination, and therefore parking is at high demand most of the year. It is not fair to the people using the park or residents living in close proximity to the park to designate any spaces for the sole use of individual businesses. Any additional parking located at the park will create more safety issues with an increase in the flow of traffic right next to a highly-used playground. The Veterans Park is also a very popular park and is currently under extensive renovation, which will make parking for the park in more demand once completed. Last year, when renovating the Yountville Community Park, the topic of using the south lot next to the Veterans Park was brought up for a solution to more parking in Yountville. At that time, the town staff mentioned they were looking into it for future parking for the town with no mention of leasing it to a business. To lose even portions of these two important pieces of public land by leasing them out to private businesses for employee and overflow parking is supercritical at a time of an ever-increasing general demand for parking. This action would not be in the best interest of the parks or the residents of Yountville. The future livability of the town demands reconsideration of this. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And I would just encourage you to follow up with staff who can give you some... John? Debbie, I was just saying, I would encourage you to...
I'm sorry.
...communicate with staff to get some more details about the projects that you referred to.
Okay.
And make sure you understand fully what the status is.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight? Welcome.
Hi, my name's Pam Reeves. I live at 6887 Jefferson Street, and I just wanted to follow up and concur with Debbie's comments about the real future needs of Yountville and the fact that using public land to address private business concerns isn't appropriate. And I wanted to express to you that as I have talked to many residents in affected neighborhoods like the Burgundy Commons and other neighbors around town, I get a surprisingly consistent impression and comments from them. People feel left out of the loop, and when they enter the loop, it feels like everything is already a done deal. Many times, there are so many staff hours invested and materials produced for a project that comes before the council even the first time, that it's almost an irresistible force that the project gets approved or moves forward without a general discussion about the basic assumptions underlying the proposals. So people feel like there's no room for comment, even though it's written on the agenda, public comment. It doesn't feel that the comments are timely enough by the time we get to express those comments. All the work is already done, the ordinance is written up, or the agreement is written up, and it's sitting there begging to be approved. More residents often don't even hear about the project until it's moving forward in a really quick manner. So these are concerns that have plagued government for a very long time, how to be transparent. And it just feels like the character of our town is so dependent on our decisions as a community. And to make good, ongoing decisions, we need a better-informed community and a better-noticed community. The General Plan Review Program is a... The General Plan Review Program is a really good example of what I'm asking for on an ongoing basis, where there is more workshop-oriented ways of dealing with projects instead of staff doing all the footwork before there's any public comment. Change happens with every single decision and at every meeting, and we need to have constant communication with residents and more input about policy and whether the project is appropriate or not. The website is a great start, but it's not transparent in its own right. You can't go to an archive where past projects are listed and shown completed and we see what the final decision was. There are indications that there are projects in the hopper, there are completed projects, but there's no backup information. I tried to research a few things on the website, and that was not very easy to do. It should be easy. And the use of other media would be helpful. We have this next-door Yountville, and we also have the Yountville Sun, which it's unfortunate that the timing of our released agenda doesn't coincide with posting of the newspaper. There should be some way to work that out, because almost everybody in town reads the Sun, and they would be better informed if that were the case. Also, when you list the agenda item, it's quite obtuse or obscure about what the actual item is. If you could list the official version and then have a tagline that explains, "This is going to be a project located here, and we're thinking of this," and that's it. It doesn't have to be long and involved, but it just has to be reader-friendly. And the reason is that we need the town government to be more accessible. And I know that all decisions come out better when there's more input. When I was on that council, this council, it was always better. Any project that we had come before us was better from the input. And the more we get buy-in from the community, the better decisions, the more we feel like we're actually a community. So, this all was brought up by the RH project, which I feel needs more citizen input. So, I hope that you'll be available for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to make sure, people that are not familiar with coming to our meetings, we're not allowed to have a dialogue on items that are brought up during this public comment portion, so we're not ignoring what they are. And I would encourage anyone to just go as far back as our last council meeting to find out there was extensive dialogue that you might be interested in about part of what Ms. Reeves just brought up, so you can educate yourselves on the dialogue the council and the public have had very recently. Any other members of the audience like to come forward? Mr. Knight?
Thank you. Mayor and council member, Eric Knight, 6638 Jefferson. Just two short comments. One, about the parking agreement contract that you're talking about in closed session, and then brief comments about LAFCO application. So, the only thing, I guess my only take or concern that I would like to maybe broach as part of the public comment on the item that you will be discussing later during your closed session on the agreement, is the importance of, I think, more community input on that decision. I think it was, it's on last council agenda where you had an agenda item, a resolution, discussing the parking agreement, that I don't believe you got to because of the earlier discussion on the RH application. But in reading that, it appears what, I guess you've been discussing for more than one meeting, because I know it's been in closed session, is a parking agreement or contract that could run anywhere from 15 to 50 years. And it seems to me that that type of a time period to commit the town to public lands, when it really seems like the employee parking management program is in its infancy, it's really in a pilot stage, to commit that long without escape clauses or some other way to end this out, to end that if things changed in the near future, that I would hope that you'd be considering. But I also hope that you would bring that discussion back as a public discussion before you make that decision, because it's a long, it's a commitment on private property or public property for a long period of time, and I think it's important that you hear from the residents about that issue. The other item, again, is the LAFCO application that I've been following. From my understanding, there's the public comment period ends on March 3rd for public comment for the issue where the town currently is asking LAFCO to support the town's application, to change, to support a study area for the town, to have the sphere of influence for the community to be, to include portions of Domain Chandon's property. And there's just a lot of issues that, with my work and everything, I still need, I want to talk to you about and to talk to the town manager about, but it's a complex issue. There's been two LAFCO meetings where the town manager and a majority of the council attended LAFCO to press LAFCO, to support a change in the sphere of influence in this town, and there's been very little or no public comment or presentation to the community on this issue. And I think it really speaks to improving the importance of transparency, to do more public discussion about this issue. And I know it'll occur as a part of our general plan update, but it's going to occur after LAFCO makes their decision on April 6th, I guess, is the next meeting for LAFCO. So, I encourage you to just have more public discussion on this parking agreement before you agree with it with both Hotel Yountville and RH, and also have more public discussion on the town's interests and why you're pressing the issue with LAFCO and the sphere of influence change. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask, before you go, Steve or Gary, I'll speak to the LAFCO thing first, and you can follow up, Steve, if necessary, and to not get into, again, the dialogue that we can't have. The comment period ends, as you said, on March 3rd. There's still another month of time for us. That is the comment period on a draft report that's going to be presented to LAFCO for consideration in April. And so, we've certainly heard, and if the timing works, that there's a way for us after the comment period closes on March 3rd, if there's a way for us to have a conversation in a meeting in March, then we can look into that. So if you could comment on that, and then also, whatever you can and cannot say about his first point about our conversation.
Be happy to. One, some of the public may remember that it was a fairly extensive and large discussion on the Domain Chandon sphere of influence and direction. In fact, that council meeting was held at the community center a couple of years ago and provided direction to move forward. LAFCO is required every five years, although in this case, it's taken nine, to do an annual municipal service review. And the intent of the municipal service review is to look at, are the corporate boundaries, the ability of the community to be economically viable, sustainable, a variety of other factors. Yountville's very unique in that the current general plan policies and our current town limits actually do not have a sphere of influence, or what in some communities is known as an urban limit line. Our corporate boundary and our sphere of influence are one and the same. Some of you may not be aware that in 1990, the town agreed to serve wastewater treatment to Domain Chandon in exchange for them not having to take grapes and area out of four to five acres. At that point in time, it was understood that the area would be annexed into the town. Didn't happen subsequently. So, long story short, the council is simply trying to rectify that and is looking only at the ability to have the discussion in the sphere of influence and supporting that in terms of the urban area, not the agricultural, only the developed. So I would, if any of you have questions, I would encourage you to read the report, call me, call Sandra, we'd be happy to talk with you. But that's an important issue, because we're trying to make sure that the community as a whole and our tax base is benefited by the extension of services. And again, we're seeking just to have it put in the sphere of influence so that it can influence future land use decisions. Couple of things with regard to the parking lease agreement, and I do think, one, I think I need to provide some background. There's been some facts that I think are a little bit incorrect. This town council, after about six months of discussion in April of 2016, actually approved on a 5-0 vote, the parking lease agreement and a structure for Hotel Yountville. That is not new. That actually occurred in a very public process almost a year ago, and there had been a council ad hoc committee working on that. I do think it's important, and I think we can frame a community conversation on parking, where parking is located, in a sense of trying to understand that. And parking can be a very personal situation, and I think we need to acknowledge that as well as the community. One of the things over the past seven years, the town council has asked us to be more innovative and creative in trying to be a partner in solving the parking problem. And that means taking a look at our assets, our property and our right-of-way, to ensure that we're doing that in a smarter, more logical sense. And it's been holistic. We also have a number of land use decisions that were made 20 and 25 years ago that accepted grandfathered business uses that do not meet parking standards. There's been a cumulative of them made by prior councils, and in many ways, the existing public parking along Yount Street, Washington, Fennel, Mulberry are utilized as employee parking for those businesses that do not provide onsite parking. So in all candor, the conversation about, should the town be involved in using its assets to provide public parking to benefit businesses, we've been doing it, and we've been doing it in a different way for 25 years. But in listening to today's conversation and last council meeting's conversation, I think what I would like to propose is that we do a little more extended overview and show some of the things that we've been doing and how we've been trying to approach this on a more comprehensive approach, so that we can try with the goal, the goal of the council has always been to try to ensure that we minimize the parking in the residential neighborhood. Not doing anything is not going to change the current parking behavior. So we do need to look at it, but we also need to do it with a spirit. With regard to that, Pam, Debbie, and several of Lloyd, and several of you in the crowd, when we talked about Yountville Community Park parking two years ago, you participated in the dialogue. Your participation was very important in the sense that we didn't end up encroaching on Lincoln. We talked about up against the cemetery, and at that point in time, you said, "Up against the cemetery, back along the undeveloped side, much more preferable." We listened. So I do think it's important to recognize that many of you in this room help influence the decision. Having said all that, we need to work cooperatively and collaboratively to try to do something that is better for all of Yountville. So I think with that spirit, I'll put an agenda item on the next council meeting to do a more holistic historical review of parking, the contributions, and then we can have a more candid conversation. But I certainly want to take a look at the fact that one of the things that the council's been looking at is trying to make sure that the community benefits from these public-private partnerships, because the earlier ones that I'm referring to in 20 and 25 years ago, the private hasn't paid for the contribution. So in this particular effort, what we're really looking at is the private sector is having to pay for rent. They're not getting the space. They're having to pay for the development, the construction, and then we're trying to ensure, under the employee, parking management plans that Mr. Knight mentioned, we're trying to make sure that their employees are shifted and put into those locations so that we can manage where their employees go. And it's become very clear to me that we need to do this in a holistic way, so you all see what we're talking about. And unfortunately, as one of the speakers mentioned, and it may have been you, Debbie, we didn't have a full discussion on this, because it ended up being pulled. So I think there's some good opportunity to do information sharing, and we need to do that.
So, since we have a lot of interested parties here, and not all may stay to the very end, when we normally ask this question of our attorney, do you anticipate any action from our closed-session items tonight? Possible or unlikely or probable?
No.
So, just so there's some understanding, I'm trying to walk a fine line of what we're going to be discussing and not discussing, that we are not anticipating making any formal decisions in our closed session tonight.
I'll even go a step farther, Mayor, if I could. And the fact that the item was a separate standalone item with a staff report and the presentation, this has to be a standalone item. It cannot be done in closed session. The council can provide feedback and direction to staff as a negotiator in terms of the deal points. The agreement and everything must, must come forward in a public meeting format, which is why you saw the item on the last agenda. And again, there was, you know, back in April of 2016, a similar process in a public item was discussed with the direction provided at that time with regard to Hotel Yountville. So, I think I just added to my workload for the next meeting, but I think it's important to provide that perspective. And then we can make, as a community, value decisions, because for some folks, this may be in their backyard, they're okay with what we're doing in other areas. Conversely, some of the folks in the other areas may prefer we not do something there and do it, but we need to look at what's good for the community as a whole.
Thank you. Any other issues that someone would like to bring forward to the council tonight in our public comment session? Okay. That takes care of our public comment.
There is one other. I'd like, if Ms. Reeves could follow up with me, I think there's some comments that I can work with her on, the public noticing and making sure people are aware. So, I'll follow up with you, Pam, on some ideas for making sure the website's navigable and where information is. And, you know, we've also been using the public hearing notices and signage for all commercial projects to try to make sure that we're improving the information. So I think there's some things I'd like to chat with you further on your comments.
And I know for a fact that our Yountville Sun does support putting out agenda items in advance whenever there's space available. So, we have many different platforms upon which we put out information.
In some ways, if I could just, we almost have too many platforms, because I'm not going to preface anybody by their age, but 20, 25 years ago, there was only really one way in terms of how everything was done. And now, we have so many choices of where we're getting information. But I will put a plug in. If you can go onto our website, you can sign up for town agenda packets. The packet will come to you. You can then choose, if you look at it, all of our agendas are interactive, so that the staff reports and the information contained in them are actually attached. So you don't have to wonder what the item is, all the detail in the staff report and the various material. And then if we need to do a tutorial on how to navigate our website or do some stuff. Land use planning projects are also slightly different. There's a different slight process that we have to use, but all the historical on approved projects, the minutes, the agenda packets are there. So, I'm interested in how we can improve our outreach, but it is a challenge in today's environment. There's almost too many, too many places that people are looking.
If, Mayor, could I add to those comments? I've just pulled up our town website to show those audience members here where they can sign up for e-notifier and on the homepage where the agendas are available. And one of the newer things that we provide to the public is we have an e-comment section on our agenda page that you can e-comment on specific agenda items. Right now, that period is, I post the agenda hopefully by 3:00 on Thursdays for the following Tuesday, and then we close the public comment period at 5:00 p.m. the Monday before the meeting to give council members an opportunity to review those items. So I'm going to take a moment to show you where those items are here on the agenda, so you can see that and sign up.
And while you're doing that, Michelle, I'll also use... And while you're doing that, Michelle also used Mr. Knight, who's in the audience, as an example, emailing us some of his comments about items that were on our discussion tonight. These automatically go into public record. We all receive them and are briefed on them prior to the meeting. So if you can't attend, there are multiple ways for you to share your thoughts. So we have done, I think, we've made every effort possible to make it as simple and engaging for the public.
And I'd also encourage those of you that may have a question about a project or an item, or just want to understand the process better, give us a call. We're fairly accessible. We really try hard to understand it. And we recognize that in some of the situations, there are people that have differing opinions and direction, but we'll try and make sure that if there's information you're looking for or input, because I do think in many cases, you know, the more we reflect the ingredients, then the better the recipe is when we're all involved.
So if I may, the items, this is our town website, www.townofyountville.com is where you can go. And these six icons to the right are quick access to, for the public. We have our e-notification icon. We have a direct link for Envision Yountville, so you can follow that process. And this icon is the meeting agendas and videos. And that takes you to where all of our agendas are. Hopefully it will come up. Oh, I was interrupted. So, let's see if it can come back.
One of our capital improvement items later tonight is about our technology in this room.
So that did disappear, so I'm not going to get back to it quick enough, but you saw at least a quick glance of where you can go to get those with one click and to be more informed. And you can sign up to receive e-notification of agendas. And then that way you'll be informed of when items are on town council agendas. And I'm happy if you would like to give me a call, I'm happy to go through the website with you to help you navigate those areas.
So we're still in a meeting dialogue. Pam, if you have any other questions you'd like to follow up later with staff, I invite you to do so, but we do have a meeting to continue. So moving forward onto our consent items, we have had requests to pull a couple of these, so we're basically going to dismantle the consent calendar and handle them one item at a time. So item 9A is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance amending municipal code regarding open space and floor area ratio. And I believe Vice Mayor had requested this to be pulled, so could you offer your question or concern?
Well, I've had several conversations with town manager today about it, and I think that it needs clarification because the, especially in the way that it was, the agenda that it was on and what we were discussing in terms of parking and RH and the rest of it, it really did get, it muddied the waters. And I think that we do need to have clarification on exactly what this municipal code change, this ordinance code change, means.
Okay, so with that, I think we'll go ahead and treat this like a regular item then, invite Sandra to give us a report.
All right, well, in a nutshell, it can be broken down into three different items. The, it's amendment to the zoning ordinance and the design ordinance to clarify the differences between FAR, floor area ratio, and open space. And over the years, they blended together and there wasn't a clear distinction. So the FAR rules are to determine the ratio of buildings on a property for the most part, with some exemptions for certain types of building elements, and to classify open space as anything that isn't a building, except that does not include parking lots or areas for garbage disposal. So FAR is to identify buildings, open space is to identify open areas. And with that in mind, we came up with some more rules on how business may use an open space area. And in the past, there was not a clear distinction on when it's used and what those impacts are. So as part of these revisions, it's to say that impacts will come before the town council on a use permit application. And impacts as to noise and hours and all of that can be identified, especially as to parking. And these rules clarify that if a building wants to use, if a business wants to use an outdoor area, that is a use area and parking rules apply. A good example would be Maison Ries that was approved under the old rules. We know that their parking demand is calculated based on the four walls only. And it's a very small building on a very large parcel with a big garden. And so use of the garden was never calculated into the parking demand. These rules will clarify that. If Maison Ries is to come before you in the future for, to change the use of that outdoor area, that would count. And I think that's what the rules were intended to be all along. We look at this as a clarification and a good cleanup as to what staff has been applying on projects in the past. This simply codifies it. So I hope that helped clarify.
And this doesn't apply to any specific project or property? This is to-
Right, correct.
Change the ordinance for everyone?
Correct.
Going forward if there are modifications or new, new uses presented?
Yes.
But that was my other question. So this does not apply then, for example, to Maison Ries because they were approved, their use permit was proved under, but, actually, I don't want to get into that right now because that's all part of the other, but, but say another business in town that is grandfathered in, as they say, quote unquote. Unless they make a big change, they, they remain using, you know, the, the open space is sort of combined in a way that, that this clarifies.
Yes, this, this new ordinance does not allow anyone to use their outdoor areas if they're not using them. And if a business wants to change the, what they're permitted to do in the open space, they are required to come back before the council with a use permit amendment. So there may be businesses that would be considered legal non-conforming, and they are allowed to operate without change. If they want to change that, they would be subject to the new rules. Thank you.
This would actually give the council more discretion to require additional conditions going forward if we adopt this because there's a larger part of any business parcel that would be calculated for its use.
Correct.
Any other questions of the staff report from council?
I actually have a few, thank you. So, as you may remember from the last meeting, I had spent a lot of time on this and I have spent a lot of additional time. So I've come up with some questions. I think I know the answers, but I just want to make sure that I do. And so I've tried to keep with my theme of simplifying. So if you'll just bear with me, I've written them down. Does the language of the ordinance that your, ordinances that you're presenting tonight ensure that any open space used directly or indirectly for purposes of operating a business will be counted as use area in assessing parking burden and other requirements arising from the commercial use?
Directly, yes, but not if it's an indirect use, that's not part of their use, it wouldn't be calculated, no.
Is daily use a fair description of that? Regular operating use as opposed to-
Essentially, yes. If it's an essential part of the business, if they're serving tables, if they're serving wine, if they're allowing a bar to occur, then it would count.
But a special event use would not? If an outdoor area was not used for daily operations, but it was allowed under the conditions of their use permit to have X number of special events in that space, that would not trigger it, correct?
Right. Parking is based on, right, the daily use rather than the exception.
Okay. And number two, the ordinances as presented tonight, if approved, can a business put more than a three-foot tall fence around its open space, whether or not that open space is counted as use area?
No, there's currently a standard for fence height in the front yard setback, and that's three feet or lower. And these rules do not change those rules.
Okay, and I think there can be a variance to that three-foot, right? And that would go through the ZDRB? So that would still achieve our massing, our limitation of massing? Am I right about that?
Well, yes, variances are very hard to achieve. They're very strict standards, but if someone were to request that, it would come before the decision makers and, for public review.
Okay. Under the ordinance as is presented tonight, how and when may open space be secured? And by that I mean, can a gate, a locked gate be put? That kind of thing.
That would be reviewed under design review, so it would come back before the decision makers. These rules would not allow businesses to close off their open space without public discussion.
And under the ordinance that's currently, the ordinance is currently on our books, if a business wants to, during the hours it's closed, if it wants to gate off its open space, is that allowed assuming it passes design muster?
It's generally not allowed because of the, the current rules have defined open space as something that's available to the, to the public 24/7. So they were not permitted to close those off for security for the most part, although there are examples in town where security overrode those concerns and Priest Ranch is an example. After hours, the stairway to the terrace is closed.
So this ordinance would be a change to current practice in that securing open space would be allowed, subject to-
It allows the question to be asked, yes.
-limitation by the ZDRB. It allows the question to be asked, but it doesn't require that permission be granted?
I want to make sure that that was clearly answered because I think it came out opposite. It would need to be authorized to allow closing off of open space.
Correct, yes.
I think it came out backwards.
We are not, the town or the ZDRB or the council is not required to allow gated open space, so-
The other way around is if business cannot gate off open space without permission from the town.
Correct, that's what I'm-
Nicely said.
That's it. Ding ding. Okay, so, under the ordinances as presented tonight, who determines the portion of commercial open space that is or is not use area?
Well, staff initially reviews an application and determines what the number, the area would be and presents that to council. For council's decision, it's, council's decision-making body approves or denies.
And so council has the final decision based on staff's recommendation and any documentation brought forth from applicant?
That's right.
And public comment.
And public comment, thank you.
What I would also say on that is, the best way to look at the ordinance change is in future applications coming before you. Because, for example, somebody may choose not to use their open space for the use, and it's just a landscape area, it's attractive to look at, it's an amenity that is visual, and that's why the application will be very specific. And then the determination will be identified on the specific use condition. So ultimately, that would come back to the council to make the approval and to evaluate what the appropriate conditions are if you're going to allow the use of the space. But initially, the applicant would identify that in their project narrative in terms of how they're intending to use it.
Thank you. So what we're talking about here is calculating use area as a square footage, correct?
Yes.
So, does the ordinance differentiate? And if so, let's say we had a 100-square-foot patio and everyone agreed that 100 square feet is the use space. And the owner, one owner says, "I'm going to have three sofas and a fire pit." And one owner says, "I'm going to have five pub tables, 20 chairs, and people are going to also stand around." How does the ordinance determine, or how do we, using the ordinance, determine the parking burdens and other requirements?
Well, as you say, the use area is defined based on the area. So 100 square feet could be used for any numerous uses. And parking would be assessed based on the use. A retail use is established by square footage. A restaurant use is assessed on a seat standard. And a bar use is assessed at a building code occupancy standard, all of which are very different and which would come up with different parking demands. So it boils down to the use.
Okay, and we have a way to monitor the use, correct?
We monitor businesses annually as part of the use permit monitoring. We do our own inspections, and then we meet with them once a year to review conditions and operations.
And that's a minimum. Any complaints or allegations of violation are responded to by staff.
Correct.
But that's a minimum reporting and review cycle.
And this, I think, comes somewhat to Vice Mayor Doren Becker's point, is if we approve the amended ordinances tonight, after they become effective in 30 days, will every business seeking a new or amended permitting have to provide parking area for all use area, whether it's indoors or outdoors?
Yes, all new and amended projects would be required to comply with the new code.
And if a business files for a new or amended permit between now and the effective date of the ordinances, can we impose terms that mirror the ordinances in the conditions of approval? Because the ordinance is pending.
Essentially, yes. By practice, staff has been applying these rules when we, when we bring projects to you, so we've been encouraging this approach. This simply codifies it.
And what changes, if any, do these proposed ordinances make to residential open space?
No changes.
And then, Mayor, I also have a comment to council, but it's not a question for staff, so I will hold on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council on the report? Any member of the audience want to speak to this item? Okay, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Elisa Bedola, 6819 Yount Street. And just a general question, I don't know if it's already been stated, but I'm trying to understand. Is there a ratio from a business's maximum capacity, whether it be standing or somewhere, indoor, outdoor, for the business's location? Is there a ratio between the maximum capacity and the parking spaces that is required for each business to have?
Is that your only question? Because if it is, then we'll go ahead and invite staff to-
That's my question, to try to understand what she was saying. Maybe that was built into something she had already said that I don't understand.
Okay.
I'll take my answer sitting down.
Okay. No, you have to stand up.
Before you leave, could you spell your last name for me, please? Could you spell your last name for me?
Sandra?
Thank you.
She references two different standards. The town's parking standards are, for the most part, best practices used by other jurisdictions and how they've assessed parking demand. Ours have been slightly tweaked in favor of what we have as a higher parking demand in town because of the high level of service workers and others. So that's how the parking demand number is, it arrived at. Occupancy comes straight out of the building code, and there's a maximum amount of people permitted in an area based on safety concerns. All buildings post what maximum occupancy is. For the most part, those are very, two, two very different numbers. Our parking standard that comes closest would be the standard for a bar, which is based on that building code occupancy, but it's not on a one-to-one ratio, it's on a one-to-three ratio.
So building code occupancy number in any other city in Napa County would be using the same formula, but our parking formula sets a higher standard of spaces required for, say, a restaurant use because we acknowledge that our restaurants have more employees?
There are two different standards, so I wouldn't say higher, but-
No, I don't mean-
Oh, parking standards throughout the valley.
Higher than, than a-
Yes, for the most part.
Another restaurant somewhere else in the valley, they may calculate their employee headcount requiring fewer parking spaces because they have fewer employees to run a similar type of restaurant. Because the high level of service here in Yountville, they have more employees, so we acknowledge that and require more parking for a similar restaurant.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I hope that helped clarify your question. It's clear as mud. We, we need, sorry, we need to, see, I told you, we wanted to make you stand up there still. We just need to make sure everything is recorded on the microphone, sorry.
That's okay, I've been sitting all day anyway.
There you go.
In reference to employees, I hear what you're saying, but I was thinking of maximum capacity as far as consumers, buyers, anybody who's in their, with whom the business is doing business, not just employees. I was actually thinking of the customers.
And parking standards are intended to apply to all users of the space, so owners, employees, guests, all sorts of parking impacts. So, yes.
Okay, so, so maximum capacity doesn't really correlate. What you're saying is, there's no way to match the parking spaces that employees and consumers are using within the property of the business? There's no way to match, to try to, even try to match those numbers? You're saying they're two different languages? And I would suggest maybe that you kind of look at that as well when we're thinking about businesses.
Well, I think I maybe, we'll try to clarify again. If you have also say, any use, let's not get hung up on purely on restaurants, but if a use has 20 people come in on a regular basis and they have four employees, the total would be 24. total would be 24 that is used for the calculation of how many parking spaces would be required. We acknowledge that many of our businesses have more than four. They might have eight, because of the level of service they're delivering. So they would be calculated at 28 for the exact same number of patrons. Does that make sense? And is that accurate, first of all? Okay. So does that help clarify that or not?
Yeah. Yes. I'm just thinking of what you were saying about open spaces, and then I'm imagining that sometimes special permits might allow for extra space to be used, or sometimes wineries or taste rooms might want to have some kind of spaces designated as overflow. So I'm imagining things to, you know, worst-case scenario, when we're like at maximum capacity in the town. I'm just trying to figure out how you would gauge what is required of a business as far as space, parking spaces as well. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that clarified at least some. Thank you, Sandra. Any other comments or questions from public?
Pam Reeves, 6887 Jefferson Street. I really appreciate Councilmember Dorman's questions, because it clarified a lot for me upfront, and I really would love to see those kinds of questions and answers and discussion a lot more. But I have one other question. Is outdoor use area subtracted from open space, or is it included in that? If it's, if it's outdoors and you can see through it or see around it, is it considered open space as well as use area? And if it is, then it seems like it really kind of deducts from open space rather than contributes to it as far as the feel of it.
Sandra?
So, I would... No, it doesn't detract from open space. And that's because, as part of this discussion, the direction staff was given was to separate out building area from open area, and the fact that open areas provide relief from buildings. In order, by looking at certain open area, open space areas as use areas, we have a different way of regulating those impacts. And that's, we determined through the use permit process, where we can look at parking and noise and hours and all of those issues. But we were really trying to simplify the use of either you have buildings or open areas, and that's what was blended before that we wanted to separate.
So just to clarify, like, in the ordinance, it says a certain percentage has to be, on the property, has to be open space. Is the outdoor use area in that open space percentage?
It is.
Well, it depends on the individual use.
Right.
Yes, except for the most part. Yeah. For the most part, we see about a third of a project is buildings, a third is open space, and a third is the parking lot. So that third that is open space continues to be open space. It doesn't become parking lot, it doesn't become building, and we assess it under uses.
So if a business doesn't use any of its one-third landscaping for daily operations, it's not counted toward their conditions?
Use area.
But if they do use part of that one-third of landscape, open airspace, then whatever percentage of that use is factored into the requirements for parking and other restrictions.
But it maintains its classification as open space.
Which is also why you wanted to use the term "use" versus just "open," because it's the open space being used on a daily basis.
That's a way to better clarify how open spaces are actually used in this town. For the most part, they're not just passive landscaped areas, but they become active parts of businesses, and that's good from, when you look at the health of a city and the vibrancy of a streetscape, you don't want these open areas not used and without people in them. But if they are, let's assess what those impacts are for this use of the area. This goal was to separate out buildings and open space.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and invite any further discussion or action by the council. Is there any further discussion or action?
If I, just on...
You did have a comment, that's right.
Yes, thank you. So, as you know, I have looked at this long and hard, and I am well aware of the old adage, "Don't let the perfect get in front of the good." So, although I am not completely sold on what we've done, I've talked a lot with Sandra, I've talked a lot with Steve, so I would like to ask, if it does get approved tonight, not on any particular timeframe, but sometime in the future, if I want to continue to work on this and staff will continue to work on it with me, if the council would be amenable to looking at it, if we feel like we come up with something that is even more of a refinement of what we're saying?
Well, I don't even think we need council's direction on that. That's an option that we all have, that if you want to bring an idea or a potential future action forward, you can bring that to our town manager, and he and I discuss what might go on what agenda, and we all have that authority already.
Thank you. And then one other question, maybe to clarify on Ms. Reeves' question. If, if open space is going to be called or designated use area, under the new ordinance, it is still visually protected. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So the fact that it's subtracted or included, we maintain the visual protection, the corridors of that. Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, is there a motion for action on this item? All move we accept the second reading and adopt the ordinance as presented by staff?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, we get to vote? Wait a minute, we get to vote on our tablets? Or do we not, because the system doesn't let us do consent?
It is. It's there. She just seconded. It's going to pop up.
There it is, so we get to vote.
It did not come up.
What is your, what is your action? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Dorn Becker?
I'll prove it.
Do we have, is it, has everyone voted?
Yes.
Okay. So that's passed unanimously? Thank you. Moving ahead to former consent calendar item 9B. You see what it says there? Crossroad Reconstruction Project. It's finished.
I was going to say, Mayor, actually, you could have a consent calendar with the review.
No, we can't. We've had, we've had Dee, we've had Dee asked to be pulled for clarification.
I can make, can I make a motion that we approve Consent Calendar Item B?
Can you push your button? Is the button there?
I guess I can. Make that motion.
Who is, who is the second, the secondor? He was. Thank you.
So we're not getting our motion and second buttons?
It's there. It happened, there was a motion and a second.
There's a delay.
Okay.
And Vice Mayor Dorn Becker, are you in support?
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're still that same?
No.
Okay. So that passes unanimously, 9B. Okay, now we're moving. For a moment. Item C, and this request to pull the item from Mr. Knight, who's in the audience. We'll just go ahead and instead of just, instead of me asking why, we're just going to go ahead and treat this as a regular item, and I'll invite you to come up and, well, not quite yet, Eric. I'll express your concerns after we get our staff report. Okay. So who do we have? Joe, is this you?
This is me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I have for you, for your consideration, to approve and adopt the plans and specs, authorizing staff to advertise for construction bids for Hopper Creek Bridge Barrier Project. This project has been before the council on at least three occasions, and possibly a couple more than that, based on the fact that it's, it's been working its way down the list since 2010. In 2010, the Bridge Barrier Rail Project initially improved the Fennel Bridge, and then we expanded it to include the other bridges in town with our five-year CIP in 2011 through 2015. It is true that with the adoption of the strategic plan in 2011, the council made street maintenance, which includes towns' bridges, a priority. We own and maintain several bridge crossings. Some of the bridges were constructed prior to the 1950s. Washington Street, in particular, is probably a WPA-era project, I would, I would guess just by construction, I think 1933 or '34. The bridge rail on Jefferson is probably 1960, although it might be as new as 1970. They have about a 50-year service life, and that's when we begin to evaluate them. And when we evaluate them, we look at the entire structure. So we look at the deck, the railings, the barriers, approaches, drainage, lighting, pedestrian access standards, and we have to make sure they meet the most current engineering design standards and ADA access. We identified three bridges in need of review, Washington, Jefferson, and Yount at Hopper Creek. Of the three, after we engaged an engineering firm from Napa, they relayed to us that Yount Street met the most current standard. Washington and Jefferson definitely needed to be upgraded. We believe that this project has some value to be engineered, that's why you'll see in the bid that it has a couple different, different additive alternates. We're trying to find a way to, to get this project built for the budget that we have in place. If you look at the first bridge, that is the Fennel Bridge at Hopper Creek. Original bridge was much the same as the one at Washington, I believe, if my memory serves. The, the construction practice on this bridge was a little different than what we're going to go through on, on the other bridges, but the, but the method and materials are relatively the same. It's a concrete curb with a weathered steel railing that meets the most current standard. There has been some comment in public session about the height of the railing. We did question the engineering, the engineers about the height, and it was confirmed that they, that height is, excuse me, necessary to meet the most current safety standards as it pertains to mostly cyclists, it turns out. So that, that bridge railing is about four foot six high.
Doesn't work for you, though, does it?
Doesn't really work for me.
And Joe, I just want to clarify, because you mentioned, the bridge that this replaced was an approximate two-and-a-half to three-foot concrete slab barrier?
It was basically a piece of concrete, it was solid concrete, much like what you see on Washington Street that's painted white. Again, one of those WPA-era bridge projects that built a good, solid product, but didn't meet the most current safety standards. So if you go to the next slide, this is the current condition of the, of the bridge railing at Jefferson. It's mostly about knee-high. It's, in some places, it's actually laying on the ground. The end barriers are certainly failed and have dilapidated to the point where they are no longer effective. This bridge in no way meets the most current standard. So we, we, the plans include improvements that would match what we have on Fennel, including the concrete curb and the railing, and, and that same four-foot-six height. We are trying to work with the materials a little bit, would have the same look, but apparently, the materials that we use on Fennel are quite expensive and quite hard to obtain. So we're looking for a, a material that's, that serves the same effect and purpose, and will meet the same crash standards, but will get us in for the budget that we have in this project. There has been a comment about the concrete curb. We did make some calls to the engineers today to check, and they confirmed what we knew already, which is that curb is there for a variety of reasons. Number one, provides for a safety measure, should a pedestrian, a cyclist, or a car traveling at a slower speed hit it, they'd bounce off of that curb instead of hitting the bridge rail and causing more damage to their car into the bridge rail. It also provides some, some stormwater, it cleans up a little bit of the stormwater regulations that we have been in abeyance on that bridge. We're really not allowed to drain roadway water right into the creek. They would prefer that we manage it so that it comes off either under the bridge, helps with erosion a little bit, and provides a much better drainage into the creek. Second, third, the third part of that curb is to provide a little bit of a barrier should a child or a young person slip and fall. It decreases the distance in between the bottom rail of the bridge and what would be the top of the concrete. So it's, it's just a little bit, but in terms of safety and engineering, it's enough to make a difference. Should we not have that concrete curb, we would have to install some other type of device, whether it's a screen or, or some other feature to help screen that, that area out. Third slide. Third slide shows Washington Street, and that is that white barrier rail that has been in place since the 30s. Very effective, however, the newer rails have some tendency to absorb some of the impact, much like newer cars, and that rail does not have that same safety standard. So, the complication with this travelway is that there's a gas main and a sewer and water main that run parallel to the bridge. And so, rather than demo out that piece of concrete and risk damaging some of that infrastructure, the engineers have elected to leave that concrete rail in place, excuse me, and, and construct a new rail inside of that. So that is the one major difference on Washington from Jefferson. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the bridge rail or the construction or constructibility of the bridge rail.
So just quickly, when you say on the inside, are you saying on the bridge side?
On, yeah, inside of the rail, on the, on the, on the roadway side, so...
So, on the roadway side, so it would partially screen the concrete?
Yeah, we, we think what we're going to do is try to paint that brown or, or some other color that helps it match or blend into the rail, so that it's not just a white piece of concrete sticking out. That's kind of what we're thinking now.
Okay. Other questions in the staff report? Another question I'll follow up on, I've addressed the concern on Fennel with the height of that bridge, and I understand that it's at its required height, but part of the challenge there is the slope of the street. Do we have a similar condition here? Actually, the, the high side on the southbound of Washington would eliminate the problem that happens on Fennel, which is, the westbound lane of Fennel is lower than the bridge, so it makes it a little bit hard visually to see pedestrians, bikes, that are on the pathway. You know what I'm talking about? So if somebody's on the path, coming off the school playground area, crossing south across Fennel, it can be difficult to see them from the railing because the roadway is lower. But that condition isn't exactly the same as it would be here.
On Jefferson, it's not. It is somewhat the same on, on Washington, but there are no areas to cross there. As you know, on Fennel, you have the schoolyard there, which makes it a little bit more challenging, even with all the signs we have up. We did lower those rails to the maximum extent possible, based on comments that we heard at past meetings, so I think they lowered those rails by somewhere four to six inches.
Any other questions from the council?
I do have one.
Vice Mayor?
So, Joe, can you, I ask you, on the Jefferson Street Bridge, where you're going, you want to put a pavement and curb, a curb and a...
A barrier, you mean?
Well...
Railing.
Yes. But is that, is that Jefferson Street that is in part of Old Town?
It is in part of Old Town, that's correct.
And are there other sidewalks in that area?
We're not, we're not placing a sidewalk, we're just putting curb along, along the barrier rail. So if you look, go back to Fennel.
Just the length of the...
So if you look at Fennel, it's just inside of, on the inside of the, of the guard rail. It would be running parallel to the, to the, to the guard rail. No sidewalk, just, just the curb is required by engineering standards.
I see, thank you.
It would run the length of the bridge and no further.
That's correct.
And Joe, if I'm not mistaken, didn't you also clarify that that's a potential MPDS requirement?
It is. It meets, it's actually, the town manager makes a great point. It's actually three different considerations, engineering-wise. It's the, it's the, it's the curb that helps keep people off the barrier and, and prevent damage to the barrier and to a vehicle or a person, should, should they be driving slow enough to have that happen. It also stops kids or somebody who should fall, gives them a little bit less area where they can fall through that gap. And then, as the town manager noted, also for our MPDS permit, we're required to manage our stormwater off those travelways, and this helps us accomplish that as well.
Can you explain the acronym?
The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, so it's a permit... So it's the permit that we operate under. We go through that permit review every five years. It's quite an extensive review, so we want to make sure we stay on the good side of that.
Thank you, Joe.
And I think the objective of that, just for those of you that may not be familiar, the objective is to make sure that debris from the roadway, cigarette butts, wrappers, and other stuff doesn't end up in the waterway and move forward. So it's something that is both federal, and then California does take it to a slightly higher standard.
It also helps with the erosion that just comes off the roadway and sheets across and ends up causing damage to the bank, which prematurely could cause premature failure to the bridge as well. So as you all know, you've seen it, for those of you along the creek, lots of erosion damage this year from water, so we're trying to avoid that if we can.
It also mitigates the speed of the traffic a little bit, which is...
A little bit. That's a pretty wide road. That was, you know, that Old Town area, Jefferson is very wide, so it gave our designers a little bit more of ability to work with what we had, and as a result, we came up with a design that we think we're going to be able to manage for the budget we had. It is nice having a little bit wider roadway. Washington was not like that. It's a little bit narrower.
Thank you. So I'll invite members of the public, Mr. Knight, if you'd like to address your concerns about the curb and anything else.
Thank you. Eric Knight, six-six-three-eight Jefferson. Excuse me. I've been talking to Joe about this project for, we've talked about it for a few years. He's been very helpful, and I do appreciate, I'm very supportive of the bridge barrier upgrade, especially at Jefferson Street. I live on the north side of that, the northeast side of that bridge, and knock on wood for all these years that we've lived there, you know, it's basically a highway embutment that, and when in the last few weeks where the water was practically to the top of the oval or in times when there's no water, when it's a twelve- or fourteen-foot fall, this will be a significant improvement and a safety issue. The only thing I think I missed in my conversations maybe in the last six months when I saw some plan was I missed the concept that there would be a concrete curb as a part of this bridge. And my concern is that the Jefferson Street Bridge is probably, of all the bridges along Hopper Creek, is probably a WPA bridge and has probably had little to no improvements except for those embutments over eighty years. And it's a very rural bridge, very historical. You can look on the side of the bridge, and every once in a while, you'll see one of those rocks that they built it with, sometimes just falls out, too. It's an old bridge. So I understand there's a need for the height of the rail. I just, there's always a concern in Old Town about concrete curbs, raised curbs, and the fact that this is a very walkable bridge. It's had very little changes compared to the other bridges. I would just ask for the town staff and for council to take some extra time that as we add that rail, that you can consider something other than concrete, that if it's a railway rail or something steel that creates that, I understand the need maybe for an embutment to keep people, that it be something more rural than concrete. I imagine that maybe a piece of steel might be cheaper either than pouring all that concrete on both sides of that bridge. But I'm just hoping that you'll spend a little bit more time, I apologize if I missed that, that we keep the look of it in a very rural, natural view, as rural and natural as possible. I'm very glad to see that highway embutment go away because of safety. A lot of families and visitors walk that bridge, and their children run out ahead, and they don't realize that at that point, there's a fairly far, there's a drop-off there where there's no water in that creek. So thank you for improving this. Please spend a little bit more time and try to be sure we can stay away from squared-off curbs and concrete in Old Town and do something different, so if possible. Thank you.
You don't think that highway guard rail is rural-looking?
No, that is very rural. But I also, with three daughters growing up there, was always walking across that bridge and be careful holding their hands because it is a drop-off there, and when the water surges by there, like in the last few weeks, it goes by there very quickly. It's a river, you know, not often, but when it is, it's a river running by there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to talk about the barrier project? You're going to hit every item tonight, I think.
Well, almost. I, do I need to say my name again?
Yes, please.
Pam Reeves, sixty-eight-eight-seven Jefferson Street. I would also like to echo Eric's concern because really the Old Town standards and the look of Old Town is where a lot of our Yountville standards came from, and one of the things that really sets it apart is the absence of curbs and gutters and sidewalks. And when I saw the specifications were for a concrete curb and gutter, I thought, yeah, that's only one place. But once you start that project, once you start down that road, all of a sudden, somebody else wants a curb and gutter, and I just feel like that's a risk I don't really want the council to take. And I'm hoping that Eric's comments about some other material that could be used as a barrier, and I am curious where you think the stormwater's going to go once it's in this gutter formation, because there's no storm drain there. It just is concerning to me that we're going to send it down the street and there's nothing to collect it. So in a way, it's better that it goes into the creek as far as that goes.
Except that violates government code.
Well, yes. I get that.
And environmental protection.
But the thing is that then you create a new problem that maybe wants to extend the curb down further, and so I would really appreciate sort of that investigation happening up front rather than after the fact. And I really concur about a piece of metal or something that's unobtrusive and not a curb like Fennel Road where it's outside and it's kind of a rolled edge. That's a much more modern approach that really doesn't fit the Old Town area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, I'll invite any discussion from council or action on the item before us.
I'm making a motion that we approve Consent, Calendar, Item C.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion?
I would like to, by making the motion, does that allow staff to consider the comments raised by Ms. Reeves and Mr. Knight to make the curb more visually palatable?
Yes. Correct? Do we just finish it with yes? We can say, we can give direction that if we are interested as a council in having you consider other options potentially to modify, we can give you that direction. If the council chooses not to do that, then the motion and the second and the vote would stand as it's presented. But there is that option that the council can give that direction, even if accepting this item.
Okay, so we can vote yes on this and still then discuss whether to make it, to explore other visuals?
With that request for consideration, we've modified actions on any number of items after they've been approved, and staff has already made the comment that he would be interested in looking at options that still satisfy safety, environmental concerns, and engineers' limitations and all of that. But if we vote on this as it is presented, we are accepting the possibility that a concrete curb may be required to meet all those needs. So Steve, if you had anything...
I was just going to say, if there's a clarity and an expectation...
Can't hear you.
If there was a clarity and an expectation, you're right, because approving the specs without a caveat, directing staff to look at alternatives, one other thing we could certainly look at would be colorized or stamped concrete that mimics the railroad tie, or we could look at rolled asphalt. So both of those would be more in keeping with what was identified as the rural character. So it would be helpful if the council wants us to look at one of those options. I would simply prefer that you add that to the motion, and then staff will look at an alternative item to modify, and then we will send it out with that caveat. There's a couple ideas that I think Joe and I have that can be reflective and still meet the intent.
And I ask Councilmember Mueller, the motioner, if you would be willing to modify your motion to include language that says, if possible, staff consider other options to have a more rural presentation.
If they meet the NPDS standards and all the other mandatory requirements that we have, absolutely.
Second or agree with that?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. It's slightly modified from...
Hang on. I was too fast. Sorry. Keep going.
Yes, no, and I'm...
So are we going to be able to vote?
Go ahead and start over, please. I'll start the motion.
So you need a motion from...
I'll do it.
Okay. So that was Councilmember Mueller, and then Durham seconded.
Sorry, got a little tricky after there. Did I do it again? Pardon me. No, it didn't. It's fine. I'm just...
Should I withdraw?
No, don't. I'm good.
Do nothing.
Okay, hang on. Here we go. Finally. Sorry about that. That was an operator error.
So is it clear that, I think it's clear to the council, what we're talking about, that we're including in the motion an attempt to provide a more rural, if possible, presentation of the curb component of this rail project? So everybody ready?
Oh, gosh.
Where did it go?
How about we do a voice vote?
Yeah, let's do that. It just disappeared. I wasn't touching anything.
So all in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we can put five-zero up there as it passes. Appreciate the thoughtfulness from Mr. Knight and others, Ms. Reeves, and we'll leave it in the very capable of hands, very capable of hands of our Public Works Director and Town Manager. Okay, we're going to, I'm so excited we get to approve our minutes from February seventh here, and it's only twenty to eight. All right. But we do have a correction. Town Clerk?
Yes, thank you. There is a minor correction to Agenda Item Six to reflect the secondor as Vice Mayor Doran Becker rather than Durham, and that's the minor change. That's been distributed to council and provided in the public binder.
So it's really not a substantive change, but we want to just make that clarification.
And then I had a question on another item, the Parking Pilot Program. It says council was given consensus direction, and I was wondering if it's possible to change that to majority direction, since I did note for the record that I would not be interested in pursuing the program.
And for clarification on that, the term consensus that I've used over the years for this type of vote does translate to a majority vote of council, otherwise I would say unanimous, so consensus is that...
To satisfy your concern.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure the record was clear on that. Thank you.
Any other changes to the minutes?
No, I made a motion.
I made a second.
Please vote. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. We have no presentations or public hearings specifically. We're going to move on to our first administrative regular item regarding Vandeleer Park Fence Replacement Project. Staff report, please.
Here we go. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, it's my pleasure to offer you an opportunity to discuss regarding the replacement of Vandeleer Fence. This fence runs parallel to Washington Street on the westernmost edge of the Vandeleer Park. It has reached the end of its service life. The current fence was designed and installed when the park was developed and constructed in fiscal year oh-three, oh-four. It does not serve a safety function, but rather serves as a design element. The fence at the time was constructed to match design elements and fencing at the Vintage Inn, which is directly across the street from the park, according to the landscape architect, who I have discussed this with personally. The first fence example that we have for you is provided to, give our PowerPoint presentation helper fits, apparently. The first fence replacement example is provided to mimic the existing fence, but with more modern materials that should be more easily maintained and repaired should that be needed. The material will most likely be some type of a composite material, and it would most likely be a picket fence. White or lighter color would be the best choice for this type of setting. The second choice. This fence has been used in multiple locations around town, includes both Yountville Community Park and the fencing along the path at Heather and Oak Circle Park. It is constructed with redwood and a wire mesh panel. It is also in use in quite a few private properties around town. It can be left bare or planted to create a living fence, and as I noted, it is kind of widely used here around town. The third choice is the no fence option. This fence does not serve, since this fence does not serve a safety function, with this option, we remove the existing fence, which should open up the view into the park. As this project provided a potential change to Vandeleer Park, and staff sought input and feedback from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee on January nineteenth, twenty-seventeen, that body voted for the no fence option. Staff is supportive of their decision and recommends the town council considering removal of the fencing with no replacement at this time. Happy to answer any questions you may have about the Vandeleer Fence.
One additional piece of information to share is that you may recall that you recently approved design modifications to the Vintage Inn, and part of that is going to be a modernization and upgrade of their color scheme and landscaping as well. So the continuation of that fence mimicking what was done by the Vintage Inn is not necessarily a guarantee. So just for everybody's footnote that they do...
Well, we know it's not. We're guaranteed it's not a match because that fence no longer exists, or won't. Won't. Yeah. Okay. Questions of the staff report?
Nope.
So the only thing I wanted to ask, or two things I'll ask, Joe. One is, I think it's obvious, but I'll ask the question anyway, just so you can answer it formally. If we choose no fence, we can always put a fence in the future.
That's correct. That's the same thing that the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee asked, and we answered in the affirmative, and we can certainly make that option in the future.
And the reason I ask that is because a concern would be if that starts to become a pedestrian kind of jaywalking location, walking through the dry creek bed, and it becomes a nuisance, then we could obviously revisit this and put up something in the future if that develops.
Absolutely. I think that was quite a long discussion with Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. They had the same comments and concerns that you did. We talked a little bit about the landscaping that runs alongside that western edge. We think it's going to prohibit some of that, what you're discussing, but if it doesn't, we can certainly come back and ask for a choice on fencing options and install the fence of your choice.
The other thing I did ask earlier in an email was pricing. We don't have any pricing in our report here on either of the two fence options.
So the budget, current budget has a budget of thirty thousand dollars. The hogwire fence, the fence with the redwood frame and wire, we have a price on that of about twenty-four. The more modern method, picket-style fence, is going to probably be a little bit more than that, so certainly below budget, but just barely. So somewhere in the twenty-four to thirty thousand dollar range, Mayor.
Thank you. Any member of the public like to comment about the fence? Seeing no one come forward, we will either continue to discuss, or I invite action if that's the best option. Anyone like to start? Councilmember Mueller?
Well, maybe I now have a question. So is the striping on the street on that eastern side, that will not change?
That will not change.
Because I have certainly noticed people who decide for some unexplainable, inexplicable reason that they want to walk over there instead of on the west side, and then they end up crossing back over when they realize it's really not a good idea. So the plan for landscaping, you will be changing the landscaping there?
We have no plans to change the landscaping at this time, although if it starts to grow out towards the edge of the road, we will maintain it towards the edge of the road. The striping will not change. We will maintain the fog line at the edge of pavement.
Well, I always like the option of doing something and spending money later, so I'm fine with a no fence option at this time.
Councilmember Dorming, thoughts?
No comments.
Councilmember Durham?
Less is more.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
I like the no fence option.
Someone would like to make a motion? I would invite that. Has anybody pushed a button?
I'll push the button. That's easy enough.
And I pushed a second.
And I pushed a second.
The motion by Mueller seconded, Durham, please vote. Very dramatic pause.
Oh, sorry. I have to switch a button. There you go.
So, the council has accepted the no fence option, so the removal... Do we have a timeline on removal of the fence, Joe?
I'm sure Larry's going to get right on that.
Tomorrow morning?
It's going to be pretty quick.
And please share our appreciation for the consideration by the Park and Rec Committee. It helps to get their feedback on that, so...
Everybody keeps saying committee.
Commission. Counsel. Let's go ahead to the Capital Improvement Program. Item 12B.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy tonight to be able to kick off our annual budget process with a discussion and direction regarding the town's five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2017-18 through 2017-22. A little discussion in background, the five-year capital improvement program, the CIP, provides the town with a long-range program for capital projects and advanced planning to fund for the construction that are in excess of $10,000 as required by law. The first five-year program was developed in 1996, and over the past five years, approximately 18.8 million has been spent on capital improvements, including $2.65 million in the current fiscal year 1617. Projects for the current 1617 year include Veteran Memorial Park, a Yountville Crossroad reconstruction, and the water main replacement on Yountville Crossroad. Each year, the projects are based on priority, need, and available funding. Sources are then queued up in the CIP as appropriate. In this way, the CIP is a living document that is reviewed, analyzed, and updated annually. As the project, CIP budget is prepared, projects and priorities are identified and incorporated into the program to maintain the comprehensive five-year rolling plan that we have all become very familiar with. This year is a little different than in years past. We're kind of shifting into more of a planning phase after many years of heavy construction. We're focused on planning and annual programs such as our ADA Accessibility Program, our street light, and our street light replacement program. The ADA Accessibility Program is directly tied to the council-adopted ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. That's a 12-year plan to improve ADA accessibility as we discovered during our plan, and we're trying to remedy all those impediments to allow access for all those who want access or need access. These programs require an annual funding source to continue to make projects on these projects. We'll also begin planning for the Comprehensive Street Maintenance Funding Program, Measure T, which will begin in 2018. This program will provide a funding mechanism for our annual paving program. The proposed current five-year CIP plan is substantially reduced from budgets from previous years in recognition of the significant investment in infrastructure over our past several years. Part of this, part of our process is to take our CIP program in front of the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission and have them review. We did that on January 20th of 2017. They were very supportive of our Parks and Rec Civic Facilities, community projects, and Park and Rec creation sections. They were especially supportive of the pickleball courts project. In 2012, Measure T was passed by the county voters to fund street maintenance projects beginning in 2018. This year's CIP will not include any large paving or micro-surfacing activity. Staff will instead use this time to prepare for the upcoming Measure T funds and program requirements to maximize the use of these funds when they become available. This will allow building the Measure T fund balance to support future-related Measure T eligible projects, most of which were funded by general fund in the past. With that, we'll start reviewing projects that are coming up for this year, or projects that we have added to the new five-year plan. So, first up is the Town Hall Council Chambers improvements. In this current fiscal year, we've been doing a little bit of planning, and we've been upgrading some audio. We intend to continue to do that. We also are going to improve some of the accessibility, some of the equipment, the IT platforms, and help modernize the council dius a little bit. We're also going to try and improve some of the area down where staff sits and upgrade the plan a little bit, and we'll talk about that when we get a more definitive plan. But basically, these big tables would kind of go away. We'd have a couple of staff members on this side. Michelle would be a permanent fixture. At this table, and then whoever's giving the presentation would sit beside her with the town manager and the town attorney sitting on the other side. We think it's going to help open this up a little bit, and then staff would have some seating in the back. Second, this is a moving wall at Community Hall, so the curtains at Community Hall have kind of outlived their service life. Parks and Rec Director Holland, because of the programming at that Community Hall, needs something that's a bit more modern and something that has a bit more aesthetic value so that when she rents out that space to somebody who's using it for some other function, she can hide some of the tables and chairs that aren't being used. So, that project is slated for $40,000. We're going to replace and update security cameras for facilities, so this is the existing system that we have in place. We're also going to add a couple of cameras here at Town Hall. We have a contractor that we've been working with, a local alarm company, and they are interested in trying to help us rehab the cameras that we have, install a new operating system that will be able to handle the cameras and the systems and be a more modern system than we have right now. Right now, we're having trouble getting all these cameras to operate regularly, so we need these to provide the security and help us manage our risk in these facilities.
Don't say that too loud, Joe.
This is a new one, painting the post office in the Sheriff's Annex. We have a bid of about $27,000 to do that. I believe that in talking with staff and the town manager, this was painted in '09 when the community center was built, so it's right on, kind of coming right up on our schedule. It's about, actually, a year or two past, so we could probably get away with painting part of it. We recommend not doing that and painting the whole building while we have the chance to do it before it starts degrading the building. GIS mapping improvements. This is a continuation of the program that we've been building on for a few years now. This year, it's our partnership with Regis Ranchakukamunga. We're going to introduce additional functionality to our Myville app. We're going to continue to improve our mapping system, adding additional layers, improving access for both internal and external users. In discussing with staff at Ranchakukamunga, they're starting to use a 3D model that helps with public safety, so we're interested in trying to do that if we can. It's a phenomenal system, and we're now being able to use it in a much more robust manner. Washington Park ADA Access Improvement. So, this was a part of our self-evaluation and transition program. We have three locations that we have identified as requiring access for ADA. They are town facilities. It's the Three Wears Park on Forester. It's the Forester Park in front of, the parking area in front of Forester Park, and the area that goes around from the Vista neighborhood down towards the path on Forester at Beard Ditch. So, that is a new addition and would be coming up in year 21, 22.
Just to clarify, Public Works Director, this is consistent with the community conversation and the dialogue that we've had over the last three years in Washington Park in terms of how to rectify. What's new is we're moving forward from the engineering, the planning. You'll note that we have the no ADA accessibility walking, and this is sort of in working with a portion of the neighborhood. Not everybody is in support of this project, but this is sort of the minimal project that meets ADA compliance and also leaves the balance of the neighborhood unchanged.
Vineyard Park Outdoor Exercise Equipment. This is another project that has been on the list for quite some time in some form or fashion. The equipment that we've been looking at with Parks and Rec Director Holland and the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission would be suitable for outdoor use. It would be similar to what you see here, although not exactly what you would see here. So, it would be used at Vineyard Park, as the title suggests, and we have had some interest in it, so it's been a long time coming.
Joe, a quick question about that.
Sure.
How are you determining what type of equipment? Are we vetting it through our Park and Rec Commission?
We will, sure.
Yes.
Of course. We have started that vetting already, but we are going to drill down and actually get some, a real idea of the kind of equipment that they're interested in, and then get a price and location for that.
I have another comment about that, too, because, you know, a long time ago in Vineyard Park, we had a park horse there, and nobody used it. So, I think, you know, really having some understanding of why I spent money on that and then threw it all away, but I...
There also was a local fitness center business at that time.
Right.
But that is something for consideration.
I think that's what the comment was, Councilmember Mueller, was that at that time, there was a fitness center. There was also a little short discussion about having some kind of a small fitness center somewhere in Community Center, Community Hall. We just don't have the space for that, so it's kind of now drifted towards the outside, and this is our offer at trying to accomplish that.
And I would say this is, park horses were quite the de jure thing about 20 years ago. Yeah, 20. So, this is actually, in some ways, it's an outdoor version, but a lot of this equipment has a similar functionality for those that are interested in a workout to what they would have at a gym. And we're trying to come up with some response to the fact that we don't have a public accessible fitness center, and for those that don't want to commute. We also know that Vineyard Park is sort of one of the central walking points. A lot of people in their walking paths come through, and it's also sort of our current adult active area with the tennis courts and the pickleball court, so it seems like a natural fit.
No, I don't have any problem with that. I totally agree with that, but, you know, I think, you know, there's several people that exercise out there, making sure you pull them in, the Parks and Recs, and, you know, really letting people realize that it's happening, and, you know, you might want three of these and one of those and none of those, because it took us a while to really get all the playground equipment right and in the right spot.
We can certainly have a...
That's all I'm saying, is making sure everybody who wants to talk about this can know it's coming up.
Parking Recreation Advisory Commission hosts a workshop or two to review the options and then get some feedback and public input on which pieces of equipment they think they would like to use.
We agree. There's a lot of choices and location. I mean, that's the other part of the discussion is, you know, once we decide on what we think might be the best fit, then where's that going to go? So, it's a robust discussion that we plan on having.
Price, Mayor?
Yes, I'm wondering if you are planning in the future to allow people to reserve that area, as we do with Bauchi Courts, for example, and pay for the privilege, or, I mean, how are you planning to...
I would say this is viewed as an amenity to address the residents, so I would see this as much like a lot of the other facilities. This is a drop-in. So, I mean, we'll be looking at several pieces of equipment so that, just like when you go to a fitness center, you know, there may be somebody on the piece of equipment, but as you rotate through, you know, we're talking five to six pieces, depending on budget and ultimate selection.
I think the genesis of this really was when the Health Club in town closed, and people were looking for somewhere to still get a workout in, and we did discuss having it at Community Center, Community Hall for a short time. We just don't have the space, and so the natural spot was outdoors and try to get something. And they really do have a nice selection of outdoor workout equipment that is both durable and actually works well, so...
Well, I'm concerned because people coming around Oak Circle, right there, it becomes a blind curve, and people come around there very fast, and I'm concerned that the increased popularity will increase the possibility of someone getting hit. So I don't know if we, you know, if you can, how you can put slow down out there.
Well, certainly the pickleballers have increased activity out there, and we haven't had any, thank God, anything go on, but we do keep an eye on it and try to manage traffic the best we can, so we'll keep an eye on it.
Councilmember Durham?
Thank you. As we look at the $20,000 initial outlay, do you have any figures at this time on annual maintenance and/or whether it will increase our liability costs?
We have been looking, these things are built for the outdoors, and from what we've been able to find out, the maintenance is relatively low. There are some inspections that are required as far as risk or injuries, Parks and Rec Director.
The investment's fairly small. These are really nicely priced items, but they're ones that have been in other facilities for a very long time. Some of the feedback that I learned at conference regarding these types of items is it's really more just, you know, some of them have wearable parts, like padding on handles and things like that. It's fairly minor, the maintenance, and they actually have quite a long life because they're structured to be outdoors through all the elements, so... As far as liability is concerned, it would be treated just like any park equipment that we have within the town. Any type of person visiting any of our other parks with play structures, it's viewed the same. It's a drop-in use at your own risk.
Thank you. And about how much space do you think it would take out of the green space of Vineyard Park?
We're actually focusing mostly on that area that's unused at this time, that has the kind of cushiony equipment that is adjacent to the tennis court. So, as Joel continued in his presentation, we'll look at what we're hoping to do with that complex in the next fiscal year, but this would integrate into that, so we haven't totally decided on that, but we really are trying to avoid encroaching on that view corridor and that green space and hopefully utilizing it all in the same area. They don't have to be spread far apart. They actually have a fairly small footprint.
Thank you.
And we do have 15 pages to go, so we do have a few pages to go. 64 slides.
Pickleball Court. This was the most heavily endorsed in the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission by at least one or two members, for sure. We have been in discussions with the preeminent court builder in this part of the state and maybe the whole state. We're lucky enough to have somebody who lives and works pretty close to us and be able to come up and give us advice. Initially, we thought we could expand the court and add an entire new play surface, meaning either tennis or pickleball, four pickleball courts or one tennis court. However, that won't work because that would require us to rotate the court play to an east-west orientation, and I've been told that tennis players and pickleballers really don't like playing with the sun in their eyes, so he suggested that we add two courts on the Beard Ditch side of the court, and so that's what we're looking at now. So it would be two, basically be about a half of a tennis court, so two pickleball courts.
As well as fixing the issues that exist and resurfacing the entire complex.
Correct. Yeah, it would be a new play surface, so we take out the surfaces there now, increase the surface by that additional square footage, and then resurface the entire area with both, for both tennis and pickleball.
Councilmember Durham?
Did it, how many times has it flooded over there again this year?
Um, three, four, I think. Three or four. So that's one of the...
$200,000 is going to ensure that even if it floods, it's going to be protected, because this is, this tennis court, I mean, I started on the Parks and Rec Commission, and it's continually been always presented that we're going to fix it, or this, or that.
Yeah. It's going to be a different surface, Councilmember Durham. It's not going to be that carpet mat-style surface that we have now. It's not going to be that carpet mat style surface that we have now. After talking with the gentleman from the court surface company, the contractor, he recommended that that wouldn't be his choice and that the technology's come a long way and that based on the flooding that we have there and the play that we have there, he's recommending a different type of surface that's much more durable.
So based on the flooding there, we're still going to keep stuff there that we keep putting money into every year?
Yeah, it will. I mean, we'll be able to wash it off. It won't be, it won't have, it won't be a carpet. So that's what's happening, is the water or whatever's getting up underneath it and lifting it up a little bit, so it'll be a much more easily maintainable surface. It's still going to flood. That's correct.
The concern I'm hearing that I kind of share is if this is under inches of water over an extended period of time, it doesn't necessarily matter what the surface is, the foundation is going to be compromised. Is there another mitigation that we can do to protect these courts, whether it be some kind of perimeter that reduces the impact of the water in that area? I mean, it is a low-lying area that when we have a year like this, obviously, it's exacerbated, but even on a normal rain year, there'd be water on those courts.
Absolutely.
Not just soaking up a carpet.
Outside of raising that surface a few feet, there's not much we're going to be able to do. I mean, it flooded 18 inches.
Oh, yeah. I go out there every day, it's flooded. What about the trees, too? Because if you build out, take out trees, that's an issue. If you build out to the trees and tree roots are an issue.
Some of those pine trees would come out, but they're at the end of their service life as well, so.
Yeah, they're pretty ugly back there, okay. But there's still a lot of trees, you get a lot of tree debris out on that end, too. $200,000, I agree, it's a lot of money. And, you know, I know the pickleball people are very enthusiastic, and I'm enthusiastic for them, but just kind of wondering, you know, if we, we kind of have a core group, and if we ever lose them, how versatile is it to do something else with it?
Well, it's going to be a tennis-
Yeah, and I just want to point out, so what we're finding after the flooding, and we're about a little over seven years into that surface being on those courts, it had a 10-year life. So although we've had problems all along, the flooding definitely has impacted that, so if we take no action in the next fiscal year, you're basically going to have a closed two-court tennis complex, because we really are not in the position right now to reopen the court safely. And we're hoping, as the weather dries out, that we can mitigate some of that, but we know, at least on the main tennis court, that that's not going to be an option. We would have to do something.
Just to resurface it right now, to take up that mat that's there, and then put a surface down that's more flood-friendly, for lack of a better term, you're going to be in the $80,000 to $85,000 range, according to that contractor.
I'm not hearing, I don't think I heard from Councilmember Durham, I'm certainly not implying doing nothing.
Yeah. No, and I'm just saying, I just wanted to point out, too, as a second part to that, part of the funding that you're looking at is an expansion, and so we definitely could come back to the point of revitalizing the courts, having the one court be shared use and the one be designated tennis, and it would bring that budget down if you're not looking to invest in an expansion at this point. But that's another option. I will say that over the course of just last summer, opening those outdoor courts, we saw well over 1,000 visits to the outdoor pickleball courts. We continue to add, we serve seven days a week at the community center now, totaling well over 400 visits a week. It is the fastest-growing program I have experienced here in Yountville and really nationwide. If you look at the statistics, especially around demographics like we have here, I don't anticipate this being something that's going to go away. People travel, and there are cities a lot larger than us, such as Concord, and just as you go south, even more that are investing millions of dollars in pickleball complexes that are huge.
I'm not, I'm not really hearing necessarily any hesitation to support the pickleball effort. I think we're just talking about, are we throwing money into a flood zone that will just be, you know, flooded and destroyed in a short period of time? That's the concern I'm hearing. That's certainly the concern that I'm sharing.
Yeah, and again, we did discuss that with the contractor. He relayed that he wouldn't have, that wouldn't have been a surface that he would have, that wouldn't have been his choice for a surface, knowing what he knows now, and he's recommending something that's much more easy to maintain and much more flood-friendly. So we won't, we'll have to clean up. I mean, there's no way around it. When stuff floods, you have to clean it up, but it won't make the surface unplayable like it is now.
And I think to Councilmember Durham's comments, approximately seven and eight years ago, we were facing at the Park and Rec Advisory Commission at that time, just from the tennis folks, there was a pressure to do something, an upgrade. I do think while we've had significant flooding and water this year, overall, that particular court's been in place for a number of years. Unfortunately, the surface that we put on has probably proven not to be the best solution at that point in time, and our goal would be to try to make sure that we do the best homework possible, that whatever improvements are made in the new surface reflects that and we get in a warranty that is going to work with the area, because we now have real good pictures that we can show and make sure that the contractor and the vendors understand the circumstances.
Okay, Joe, we're going to do our best to try to let you get through the rest of this. Any questions we have, we can hold off till the end of his presentation, so we can do it all at once.
Sure.
I'd like to at least get to the end of the presentation.
Okay. Surveys and monuments, this is a continuing program. This helps us keep up on our monument and survey record. We have been establishing a survey book. We also have a need to have an on-call surveyor. This program helps us fund both of those. Replace and equip a 2003 three-quarter ton pickup. We are looking at a variety of vehicle options. The current vehicle is a Chevrolet. Turns out, those are a little bit more expensive. We are, we will use CMAAS and the other joint JPAs to get the best price on whatever vehicle we can negotiate for at the time. Annual street maintenance program, this is the one we talked about at the beginning of the staff report, so we're getting ready to kind of, this will lead us into, oh, we don't have that one, never mind. Main and lateral repair at Yount and Fennell. So this is a part of the Measure T program, and as you all know, we've been trying to replace mains and laterals where they need to be replaced before we resurface the street. So this program, it will not be done this year, but it will be a part of the Measure T program when we start in 1819. So the street right out in front of us is, is right now the worst, has the worst score in town. It's 56 and heading down, so when 2018 comes, we'll be needing to repair that, and we will be looking at the main and laterals as well, so that we can have a 25-year road with a water system that's going to match that. This is for 1920, main and lateral parrot heritage way. So our next paving program, the following year, we'll look at the Heritage Neighborhood. That's next on the list for roads that's up for repaving and possibly reconstruction. Again, we're going to look at the main and lateral, make sure those meet our needs going out into 25 years in the future, and if they don't, we'll be replacing and repairing it as needed. We're going to dredge wastewater ponds. So the wastewater ponds are supposed to get dredged about once every 20 years. We are well past that right now. We're probably close to 25. So it's a, it's a system, much like you see in the river, where they bring a floating rig out and they will dig the sludge out and offhaul it. So it's a normal part of our maintenance, and that's what's on the schedule for this year, wastewater pond. This is, this is a multi-year program. Two pumps for two years at the joint treatment plant. These are associated with the trickling filter. I'm told that these pumps are somewhere over 25 years old, so they definitely have lived their service life. I would imagine that whatever we replace it with is going to be much more energy efficient. We will also include SCADA, as we do with most of these installations, so it will give us a lot more functionality. It will give staff out there a lot more opportunity to look at the device from our own smart devices, and it'll be a two-year program, so two pumps over two years. The video and repair outfall line at the joint treatment plant, so this is the outfall line that goes from our joint treatment plant all the way out to the Napa River. It's been quite a while since we've had a look at that line. It's about a half a mile long and 18 inches in diameter. It's going to be a high-ticket item, so we want to make sure we budget for that, and that's scheduled for 2021. And then the last slide is all of the programs that we have on an annual basis, that we do a variety of programs, whether it's ADA, our curb gutter and sidewalk, the townwide drainage, streetlight replacement, our inflow and infiltration reduction, and our water meter replacement, all scheduled for this year, and we have done those in many years past. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Durham.
Thank you. Sort of going backwards, the video of the sewer line?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed you had that in a later year. Would it be beneficial to do that now? Would it be, if we could find the funds, would it be beneficial to move it forward?
Right now, our wastewater and water treatment funds, we're doing a rate study, and we want to see what that rate study reveals, and we think that we can wait that time before we see where our budget lies and what the budget will look like when we approach that year.
Okay, thank you. On the pickleball issue, does the budget include a sound attenuation?
The budget does not include sound attenuation. It's not something that we have heard much about.
Because I will say, living back there, but not back there, I can hear the pickleball now. I don't mind, because it's all my friends, but others may feel differently, so I just throw that out as we're budgeting. You might want to look at that on a Saturday morning.
I've heard the same thing about tennis court use, honestly. I've heard the same thing with tennis courts, and our tennis courts didn't get that heavy of use, but the pickleball's courts are heavily used, so I can see how that, we can look at it, but I'm not sure what's available, but we will definitely look at it.
Thank you. On the Washington Park Americans with Disabilities Act updates, those are planned for a couple of years from now?
That's year five, so that would be at the very edge of this five-year plan, unless we have a grant or some other budget enhancer that allows us to do it sooner.
So, but whenever we do that, we will reach out to the public and we will have some discussions about how it's done and what exactly is done and why we're doing it. I mean, the bottom line is it's required, but we have flexibility in how we meet the requirement.
We have a level of flexibility, and what I would say, and I also want to make sure that everybody understands that what we're doing is we're moving forward with the very limited, and then we're going to start working on that, and we've been doing the incremental steps. But absolutely, we've been working with a group of neighbors. There may be new people we need to educate as we go through, but the intent is to do this at very minimal level, and hopefully, the legal liability side doesn't change. I shared with the council not too long ago an article in some of the business communities, but there was an ADA litigant that was spending a lot of time in Napa and was going after various businesses and community organizations. So right now, we've had a reasonably, a good set of agreement with legal experts, our risk insurance, and some of the neighborhood. And again, this is not a perfect solution, because there are some folks in the neighborhood that would prefer we do nothing and leave it exactly as it is. There are others in the neighborhood, actually, that would prefer to see the sidewalks put in, but the mass majority, the preference of the neighborhood at this time. So I think we're moving forward, but our commitment to the group, when we actually have a project, and that's why everybody needs to understand, this is really part of the very transparent, is we move something forward, we're putting it in the rolling five-year CIP. The intent of the CIP is that we introduce projects in their future outline years, rather than always doing everything as year one. So hopefully, we've started to refine it, and, but the current program is exactly where we've leapt it off with the last discussion we've had with the Washington Street, or Washington Park, excuse me, Washington Park Neighborhood Association Focus Group that we've been working with, and we still have a lot more refinement in terms of example of color, things like that, that we will go into trying to maintain the character of the neighborhood when the project moves forward.
Thank you. And then on the security cameras at Town Hall, did you say there will be two new ones?
That's correct. After some discussions with the sheriff's office and some of the other staff, it's become clear that we have a need for two additional cameras inside the internal office spaces, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Other questions of the staff report?
I have one question, Joe, as it relates to Measure T projects. You listed specifically in your report that the CIP will not include large-scale paving or micro-surfacing activity, so I'm fairly, it's fairly obvious that those would be projects that would fall under Measure T. Are there any other that you are moving forward now or holding that would qualify for Measure T? Or is it, I don't remember exactly what the scope of projects allows for T.
So the real issue with Measure T is we won't really start seeing revenue until the first quarter, so we won't even get any funds until March or April.
Understood. Yeah, it starts accruing, it starts accruing in 18.
Yeah.
But in terms of the scope of projects, it's basically road and street maintenance almost exclusively.
Actually, Mayor, I'll be happy as one of the authors of the, what you're dealing with is road, street repair maintenance, sidewalks, bikeways, pathways, street lighting, all of the things that are related to what we would consider a urban street.
I think it's town right-of-way is what they define as.
And the other thing, I will make sure, we have also a requirement for a maintenance of effort, because the citizens in the community, so we have a minimal maintenance of effort, and ours is in the $100,000 range.
$140,000, we think.
That's what makes up the 6% of-
No, that's the bicycle, that's a different.
That's different.
That's what we have to provide.
This is each agency, in other words, what they didn't want to see happen was simply supplant money and replace it. They wanted to see a level of continuation, and we've been using our highway gas user tax, which is only in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $60,000, declining. So we've been augmenting with general fund, so have another other communities. So there was a formula that's been developed, and we're going to need to continue to spend approximately $140,000 in order to be eligible. So what you're really seeing us do in this process is really plan to utilize our money to benefit, because we will be able to move and do different projects in slightly different ways. So it's actually going to release, relieve, excuse me, the pressure on the capital projects fund as we build that, because we will have an additional funding source that can go towards, again, our streetlight replacement, curbs, gutters, sidewalks enhancements, and quality, you know, making sure we stay on the micro-surfacing schedule and the repaving program. So that's what we're going to spend a lot of time this year, is sort of mapping what the next five years look like.
Thank you.
We have to provide that map to the Measure T review group, the IROC, so that they can audit it and make sure that it meets the requirements of the Measure T language. So we're preparing to do that, and then when we do start recognizing revenue from the Measure T funds, we'll be ready to go. That's the plan.
Great, thank you. Anyone from the public like to talk about this?
Kind of a quick question related to that.
Hold on just a sec. Let's see if there's anybody from the public. You came in just for this.
Kimberly Cook, 10 Redwood Drive. In regards to number 18 about Washington Park, I know you've heard this all before, because I've been here. Regarding the ADA guide for small towns, it speaks to the fact that not every facility and service in town needs to be provided ADA access, if there's equal or better facilities in town. So I have, I wanted it to be on the record that I have asked directly of the town for proof of requirement. All due respect to the town manager, but he said this is required, and I have asked for proof of requirement and not received it. And I have asked specifically through a town council member for proof of requirement, because when I read through the guide, it does not sound like it is required for these two tiny parks that have nothing better to offer than any other park in town, and especially Three Ware Park, which is not, it's a patch of grass between two houses. Three Ware Park, which is not, it's a patch of grass between two houses. It's not a park, it doesn't have facilities. So I don't see the justification for what on that list is a huge expenditure, four hundred thousand dollars. I don't see the justification for that.
So specifically, just so we're clear, the Three Ware Park segment and the Forester Park segment are the two areas you're referring to?
Well, and then they're requiring a whole path between those two, yeah.
And there's another section along Forester Lane that you're not speaking to specifically.
Well, I mean, it's all part of, it's make, it's saying that there's a requirement of ADA access there, and I don't see that in the guidelines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Pam Reeves, sixty-eight eighty-seven Jefferson Street. I also agree with the last speaker about sometimes it's not necessary to provide everything all the time with the ADA, and certain parks get overwhelmed by things that make it unusable by the rest of us, too. But my other concerns were the Town Hall refit. I would hope that along with the other things that you're doing with the furniture, that you would consider the IT stuff for the audience. Having it in those locations is really hard to actually see anything, and the screens need to be larger.
Yes, we're very aware of that. We can't even see it sometimes.
Okay. So I'm really hoping that that changes, and there are other projects that were not spoken about in this report on the five-year grouping, and I don't know when it's appropriate to talk about those, but I have questions about some of those.
Steve, your microphone's not on.
To present, so if you have questions, you can raise them, you can come talk with Joe and I on those, and we can relay, so.
So just before we proceed, remember that some of these projects are as many as five years out, and so this is not saying that we have funded and we are doing all of these things.
Right.
So with that.
Well, I just wanted to go on record that there is one project of putting in surveillance cameras or video cams around town that I would go on record saying that I really oppose that idea and hope that that's not revisited until the five years or more. And there is a project to, I assume, underground a sewer pipe along Monroe Street, which is just happens to be the crossroad where I live, and in that swale, my hundred and fifty-foot elm tree lives. And I would say that the town should consider not doing that project or not making that project the complete street because I think it's worthwhile saving that tree. It's an important part of the landscape in that neighborhood, and I've spent the last thirty-three years tending that tree very faithfully, and I had an arborist to see me about a month ago, and he said, other people who did not water and maintain their elm trees did lose them in the drought, but when trees were watered, they were much more resilient. So I would, I would like to keep that tree in my yard, and I think that any kind of excavation to put in piping would be disastrous for it. It's old, it's obviously tended to be weak as a species, and I feel like it's worth saving. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's, Steve, you're going to say something about we're going to be vetting all these projects individually as we go forward?
I want to address two things.
Feel free to say that.
Yes, that is exactly, first of all, the item tonight is the preview, the discussion, if there's additional additions, deletions, feedback. And then from a budget standpoint, one of the very last parts of your budget adoption will be to include what is this year's CIP. While we think we're pretty close in recommending based on funding trajectory and tracking, once we go through the budget process, I may still need to come to you with some recommendations for adjustments. I do want to address a couple of things in terms of, a couple of comments. One, Kim and I have had a number of conversations, and she alluded to that. The proof that she's looking for is very challenging because we've provided the guidelines. The interpretation that our risk insurance pool has had is that the individual parks have their own nuance, and it's that, in other words, the park itself becomes the amenity and the accessibility. What's further complicating is that is that they're part of our integral pathway system. So in other words, the Three Ware Park is not just the park, it's also the entry point and access point to the Hopper Creek Path, and similarly on Forester Park, we have the connection to Stag's View. So I do acknowledge Kim and Steve's comments. I'll see if there's something more that I can get, but that's where the determination has been, is that that pathway system, it's not, you know, it is accessible, it needs to be accessible to the whole community, and that's where the focus is, and not incorporating that has those challenges. So I'll follow up more on that. And certainly, the conversation of surveillance cameras has a long way to go, but there's been people in the community that have indicated an interest. And I also want to point out that when we talk about surveillance camera, I think we also need not to respond so much to just the topic, but what the goal is. The goal is to provide a tool to law enforcement in the event that there's a situation, not that these are manned and staffed and looked at, but I'll use the case in point of the stolen art sculpture, had there been video, or the incident that we had on Oak Circle and a couple neighborhoods where there was vandalism in vehicles. In talking with law enforcement, and also a technique that's been used by a number of them, is video allows them to identify potential suspects and can be useful in solving the crime. So when we look at something, this is not to imply by any stretch of the imagination that our community is not safe, and we're only talking about a limited use, which would also require a public policy adopted by the council with regards to usage, storage, and how it's going to be used. So this is only at the very preliminary discussion. We do have a surveillance camera program, the council, Town Hall, and the community center and facilities are currently under surveillance camera, again, as a tool, should something happen, when we need to be able to look at it.
And I just want to reiterate that this is what I'll call a living document. This is a guideline of projects that we're considering and trying to give staff significant lead time to evaluate. This is not a budget. This is not saying we are going to do all of these projects at these costs, and so I want to make that explicitly clear that some of these may never happen. Some of these may change from what we're saying tonight. And so I think there is a tendency to assume that if we say we accept this five-year projection that we're going to do all of these things and we have no more public comment about it. That's not accurate. So the public, the council staff will all have further discussion on all of these items. We haven't approved a budget for any of them going forward. We will be having those if we eventually can get to the meeting dates of our budget workshops, which will be hopefully tonight. We can set the meeting dates for those further discussions. Joe, did you have anything more? Are there any other questions of Joe?
No, I'm happy to talk with Ms. Reeves, too, on Madison in particular, because I think there's some misconceptions about what that is.
On Monroe?
On Monroe, yeah. I think there's some conceptions on what it is and isn't, and your tree is in no danger, honestly. So happy to discuss that with you and kind of tell you what that project's about.
Any other public with questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, is there action or further discussion by council? We want to accept this? You're looking for a vote to accept this, correct?
I don't.
Or do you need direct?
Feedback and direction regarding the fight.
So a head nod consensus of support of this?
Yep.
Is there support generally from the council? I mean, we won't push buttons to vote, but I'd still like the record to reflect.
Well, as an overview, yes, I think.
General acceptance going forward?
Proceedance presented.
Oh, the head nod?
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Are you going to lead the next discussion, Joe?
I think I'm.
No, he's not.
I think we've had enough of you for this evening.
You got through your coughing attack while you had to talk, and now you get to sit there and not cough. Right. All right, I think we're on to the next item. Budget parameters and key assumptions and meeting dates.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. So here before you to talk about budget parameters and set meeting dates for our workshops. As you are aware, we meet to discuss parameters so we can develop our budget, and then staff goes and works on those elements, and then we meet twice so that we can present to you the different sections of the budget and receive your feedback, and then finally adopt it. So the dates before you are May tenth and May twenty-second, May tenth at one-thirty and May twenty-second at one P.M. And we're slated, hoping for adoption, if I'm not mistaken, the Tuesday of June twentieth, which isn't in this report, but that's my projection is where, when we'll bring the budget document for adoption to you. So tonight, I'd just like to review the projections and the proposed parameters with you and receive your feedback on them so that we can discuss any concerns you may have and adjust our parameters as necessary so that we can build our budget based on the parameters you're comfortable with. So our objective for the year is to provide you a balanced budget for seventeen, eighteen, continue to honor our policy and reserve policies that we have adopted, and continue to refine those as well, continue to fund our OPAP contributions and all of our other liabilities are necessary to keep all of the required funding for benefits, and continue to refine our approach to use our reserves. We, as usual, have used moderate estimates, provided you some more tables this time and some more information to help guide how we process the information on revenues that we've been receiving. No changes in terms of what our general fund is mostly made up of, eighty-six percent is relying on our transient occupancy tax, sales tax, and property taxes are three major sources of revenue. Very quickly, our general fund reserves are almost five-point-three million dollars for the areas that you're familiar with with relation to keeping our government stable and our government operations stable and complying with different audit requirements. So getting right to projections, starting with our largest revenue source first, we're proposing six-point-five-five-zero, six million, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars as the proposed revenue for next year, based on the fact that in fifteen, sixteen, we adopted a budget of six-point-four million and increased it to six-point-five and ended the year with a six-point-eight million revenue source. Six-point, six million, five-hundred-and-fifty is in line with our three-year average, so it's moderately conservative. Presently, in this current year, we're doing very well. If we were to not receive one month of our peak revenue for TOT, we'd probably still meet our revenue target, which is six-point-four million this year. So we're doing very well. We're fifteen percent above the expected revenue year-to-date. At a worst-case scenario, if for some reason something happened tomorrow and we got the same revenue for the remainder of this fiscal year that we got in twenty-twelve, which is a low baseline year, which has, the economy has rebounded significantly since then, we would still meet our six-point-four million dollar revenue target this year. So we're poised well to end this year. I think that six million, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand is a slight bump above the six-point-four, but it's not too much, given that we've ended at six-point-eight. So with that, I'd just like to get your feedback. I have additional background and charts on what's happened that I can highlight for you in terms of the rate of our revenue growth, but being conscious of your time, I just would ask you if you have comments or questions about the parameter that I'm offering, or if you'd like me to elaborate more on this specific item.
Council, are you all comfortable with the fairly conservative estimate as it's presented?
Not necessarily.
So.
So, and I say this because you and I have spoken, there are, there are reports, STAR Report, Smith Travel Research Reports, specific to Yountville for the hospitality industry that can be utilized for the biggest part of our revenue. So I think I would, given the fact that Yountville participates in this report, it would be a small expenditure below a thousand dollars for the town to get reports for this, based on RevPAR, based on occupancy, and based on trends of the last five years as well as what everybody's projecting. Everything I read in the hospitality industry, just for the U.S. alone, they're expecting a one-point-seven percent increase in RevPAR for next year. So by utilizing the STAR Report, we can get all of this information and have a very consistent answer as to why exactly we've chosen these numbers for our budget, for our main revenue. So I'd really like to stress that I think that's something that we should participate with.
We will move forward with that, but as far as, again, I think that will help us refine it, there's always some footnotes, and that's why we use a rolling three-year to try to look at historical. So I definitely think we can look at that. There are footnotes that I want to make a note of. One, we have the Burgundy House, or what used to be the Burgundy House, is underperforming, and that's a property in transition, so we have eight rooms there that have really not been fully performing, waiting for where Mr. Keller will go in terms of that potential. And then we also, because I want to draw attention to the chart that the finance director has prepared for you, because I do think it's important. I keep telling you, things are plateauing. And if you look at the chart on net revenue growth, you will see that the rate of growth over the last several years is showing a flattening, and I think that reaches that point. I'm also very, you know, when we look at being conservative, I'd rather be low on two-hundred thousand than high on two-hundred thousand, and given the fact that eighty-six percent of our revenue comes from such a tourism-dependent. Also footnote, the current projections don't factor into, nor should they. We don't have, we've approved eight new hotel rooms, they aren't under construction or permit. Councilmember Durham's also brought up an interesting factor, which is we have hotels under renovation with an expectation that their RevPAR will go up because of that. That's also a very hard one for me. I can understand the industry perspective, but I'm going to be wanting to see a little bit of proof of that reality before I start putting the money in the budget. But I do think, we talked to Clay Gregory, we'll visit Napa Valley, and we'll proceed with getting the information, because it really is, TOT by itself is sixty to sixty-five percent on any given year, so anything we can do to better inform staff to make our projections is something that we will look at. So we will follow through with that. But I do want you to see that the rate of growth, and the other challenge we have there are very few destinations that have an average room rate of over five-hundred a room. So we just also need to be realistic. We have four-hundred-and-fifty-one rooms if everybody is performing. Comparison, Calistoga has approaching a thousand rooms with a couple hundred more coming on. So when we look at it, the room rate's not going to grow as much when it's at five-hundred dollars, I'm just, one would assume. So the rate of growth, that's a challenge that we face on fully understanding that. But I do appreciate.
Okay, I'd like you to clarify, if you would please, where your position is about the assumptions that.
Well, I just, what I want to, what I want to do is, because I, to a couple of those statements, I get, I get a monthly report of what Napa County does for ADR occupancy and revenue growth. ADR grew, occupancy, ADR grew by like eight-point-nine percent, and that even includes Yountville, and that was for the month of January. And, but, so, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with these numbers, but moving forward, we should have a STAR Report, we should have a trend report. Every hotel, every major hotel already participates, so we would be able to get that information from Visit Napa Valley. I just want to see that stuff. When it's making up sixty-five percent of our revenue, I'd like to see. When it's making up 65% of our revenue, I'd like to see these industry reports that are available to us saying, and this is why we're growing that way. Because I always have people asking me on the street, well, it's going to flatten out. I see that trend report, but still, this next year's not it. So that's my thought.
So in terms of the feedback, you're, you're looking to get from us right now is the council's feedback that we're comfortable with these projections right now. You're hearing some advice on adding additional elements to project in the future, potentially drill down even tighter on these numbers. Is that what the consensus is of the council that I'm sensing? Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got through your first one.
Sounds good. Okay. Moving on, I'm happy to get more research and information on helping you set better revenue targets. That's always good. So sales tax, we're proposing $1.4450,000 as your estimate. 100, 1.430 would be, sales tax in $20,000 is the public safety allocation, which has trended to be 20 for the last several years. So in 1516, our actuals were $1,452,000, and the five-year average has been a little lower than that, $1,214,000, where our notable increases have been in the last three years with an average of 1.3 million. But knowing and seeing what we've, we saw in last fiscal year, it's, it's based more on last fiscal year than the last three years because we are seeing an economic recovery. But in addition to that, we've had an increase in, we're going to have an increase, expecting French Laundry to reopen its lunch service. And so that and a couple of other different businesses that are coming in, we're expecting to see that uptick. So rather than going with a three-year average, which is going to set your revenues lower at 1.3, we're proposing 1.4 for those reasons. You'll see also that in the charts I included here, they also show a nice growth of sales tax. Our history is the same with revenue. The growth rate is narrowing, 13.8% in 1314, 5.8% in 1415, 8% in 1516. But it's still a nice, healthy growth. You'll see that in the, the revenue growth trend compared to the sales tax history, you'll see the dip in 15 and 16, and that's because of, we attribute it to the loss of the lunch service at the French Laundry, which has a significant impact. So barring any major issues and given those variables, we're proposing 1.43, or 1.45 with 1.43 for sales tax and 20 for the public safety allocation. So do we have any comments about that?
Any comment or question or concern, or shall we continue nodding yes, we're good with this?
If anything, we're a little light on this, and we'll have better trend analysis.
That's the way we do it. Okay.
Okay, so I'm moving on. So I'm going to talk about assessed valuation for a minute, not because it's an adoption element, but because it fills back around the property tax a tiny bit. So I just wanted to spend some time informing the council on this, and I'll try to be brief. So our assessed valuation increased 11.68% from 1516 to 1617. That's based on the last report issued from our, from the county assessor and the auditor. And so that's a $74 million increase, which is a really nice bump. Our assessed valuation has almost doubled in the last 11 years. And our growth in this AV is really based on the commercial resale of properties that occurs. Now, while it doesn't occur as often as residential, it's much more sizable. So it's not going to be common, but when it is occurring, it's going to be big. The assessed valuation in town changes only when there's a change in ownership or when there's significant improvements to a property that trigger the reassessment. But the actual reassessment of properties for commercial properties, particularly in this town, take much longer to complete than a residential property. So oftentimes, that translates into what is the property tax revenue source. Because it takes longer for the reassessment or the evaluation to occur, property tax doesn't materialize until later as a result of that. So I'm just trying to build up to the property tax piece of this. But you have a nice little chart here on the really good news about Yountville and assessed valuation overall and that really great growth that we've experienced since 2012. It's always nice to see the trend line going up. So related to property tax, which is the item in question for you, we're proposing $1,116,000 as the estimate based on 2016 actuals, and it's just under our three-year average. So I think that's a pretty good estimate. We know that there's another transaction that is pending out there that will probably increase our property taxes. We don't know when that's coming, so better to be safe than sorry. The, the table that's after the discussion I've covered here, I thought it would be nice for you to see how stable property tax has been. So you'll see your secured property tax, your unsecured, which is what happens when you, you pay, when you buy a new home or when you buy a new property and you have to pay the difference. And then the property tax in lieu for the VLOF, which is based on, from the state of California and different calculations. So it's been nice and steady in all three categories, very stable. Where we have a bump is the real property transfer tax, and that again is sort of one-time money, so to speak. You only get it when you do a real estate transaction. So that's why 2016 has such a big and unusual bump. But just wanted to share that with you, that we'll experience these bumps along the way when large commercial properties transfer, less so for residential, right? Because this is a very high amount, and just wanted to share that that's what happened in 2016. So back to the proposed estimate, we've got $1,116,000 based on 2016 actuals. We can adjust them in the middle of the year when we see the performance and how things happen. But that is the proposed revenue target for the next fiscal year.
So the, the two previous large purchases have been recorded in these numbers?
Only one, so we're waiting on another one.
Bartisano is in the previous cycle, this is the vintage estate, and that's all we're counting at this point.
The real property transfer receipt has been recorded for the vintage estate, but we haven't seen the property tax assessment collection, so we'll see that. There is the potential, as Maria was saying, we may see a sizable bump, but we aren't going to project on that until we have better information from John Tudor's office.
Doesn't happen until it happens. Okay, any concerns about this, or again, we're just saying yes, very good, thank you?
And with that, actually, I'll hand this over to our town manager. He wants, he wants to cover some other areas, and I will add that as, as necessary.
Thank you.
Correct him as necessary, as we say?
I'll help.
The next area is to inform you and get your feedback on what we know are some expenditure trend lines and potential. One of your favorite ones to always chat about is the animal shelter share of the contract. And this year, I have even worse news for you, but the voters approved a new measure, and that new measure is going to result in our costs going up by approximately, we're projecting probably in the neighborhood of 12 to 15% just to comply with the provision. So we're probably looking at about $26,000. That'll be a refund. We're in the second year of our two-year agreement with the City of Napa Housing Authority, whose staff serves as the extension for our housing. So that's fixed at $33,443, and we'll begin negotiations for the next contract cycle. We have been using, been continuing the terms of the three-way shared services agreement for fire and emergency medical services. I'm really trying to work with the county to get the actual contract updated. It has a provision for a carryover, and that's what we've been doing. But basically, the expenses for this station are shared with the county, the town of Yountville, and the veterans' home. So what may not, some of you may not be aware of, but the veterans' home at one point was reviewing whether they wanted to continue with the fire contract or pull out, so that had been some extension. So we're anticipating about a 3% increase in, in this cost. We are currently in negotiations for our next successor agreement with the sheriff. So I am anticipating, based on trend lines and some of the PERS discussion, this is a ballpark estimate of $950,000. We'll know more when we finish the negotiations and bring it back. I'd like to hope that it might be less, but I also don't want to set a false stage. Next, we've already had some brief conversations with the council briefing you on the stage of PERS. So we know that PERS cost generally will be going up. I also want to share with you that you've done some things as the council in your reform that, and the chart that shows you is that we currently have about half of our employees on the old classic and about half on a less expensive program. But the cost for PERS for the classic program is going up. So we'll be continuing to talk about that, I'm afraid, for the next several years. But as you know, in our unassigned fund balance discussion, you supported a staff recommendation to establish and use what we call the PERS UAL Reserve Fund so that we're banking money to augment. So we'll continue to see that. You'll see that implemented, and you'll see us continue to talk about that and to look at it. Similarly, the town currently contracts with PERS for health insurance benefits for both active employees and retirees. We're going to be looking at alternatives, evaluating and looking at those. And those options may include the league's new health insurance benefit markets. But we just, we need to look at other programs and alternatives and modifications to begin that conversation, to look at how do we provide a level of benefit, honor our commitment to retirees, but also look at trying to bring in costs where there's an opportunity to do so.
Steve, let me interrupt you for a second. We have two more pages of these to go through. What I'd like to do is ask the council, if, if the council has reviewed these and has specific questions about any of them, I would certainly entertain those questions now if you feel like there's an understanding. Because we're going to go through this again for hours and hours in May. And so we've been given this to review, and it's our responsibility to say if we have a question...
I've hit on the big ones, so if you're comfortable with them...
If there's anything else that you feel like is a priority for us to address right now, then I welcome that.
No, I'd just, I'd also really request that if any of you have any questions, you know, because as you know, we use the revenue projections, and then on these expenditures, you'll see those in the budget detail. So comfortable with that, and I'd encourage any of you to reach out and have direct one-on-one conversations with Maria and myself. And then, as you will, as we move forward, this will shape how we bring the operating budget to you.
No, I do that, and I now look to Maria to say, do you, would you like specific guidance on anything that I'm now trying to fast-track a little bit for tonight, so...
No, as long as, as you've said, council has an opportunity to review the reports in advance, which is the value of our public process. If you have questions about some of the new undertaking sections that we highlighted, which is more unfamiliar than the others, and I'm happy to elaborate on those, but everything's here for your review and to comment so that we can just do a better job at developing the budget in the next two meetings. But even then, when we meet, there are workshops so that we can adjust if you want to make changes at that time as well, so...
Let's, let's go ahead. You, talk to us about the new undertakings, because that is some fairly fresh data. At least we will have heard your overview.
So these, these are just two minor things and one you're already familiar with. Steve mentioned it, it's the PERS unfunded crude liability reserve fund, which we started in this fiscal year thanks to your policymaking last council meeting, highlighting to you that we'll be placing in that fund 258, and it'll be different. You'll hear, you will hear that term throughout the workshops because it's something that we're trying to introduce into the budget, and you're, you're going to see the growth. We're expecting PERS to be about half a million dollars. That's a ballpark figure right now. It'll get refined. And then the next thing, which is also important to note, is that we are working, we want to work with the firm that did our bonds for us to see if there's a way that we could learn more about what we could do with the drought reserve fund in a conservative, safe way to get a return on our investment. We have a very healthy balance there. It'd be nice to see if there's a way to actually see the growth in those dollars in the way that they're saved and see what we could do with that. And then the other thing that you'll see is continued refinement of the, the reserve funds for maintenance of building equipment, facilities, tools, and fleet. So just know that that's coming. And in the past, the CIP document has budgeted for those items, but really, they're not projects, they're replacement items. So we're actually going to develop the funds and move the money in there, and you'll see them highlighted, and that's just something that's coming. Just wanted to let you know.
Will we have in that, you talk about fleet, for example, what we're doing with whatever we're eliminating off of our, our sheet? You know, if we have a Chevy truck that's 15 years old and we're eliminating that for a new one, what, what happens to the old one?
So that's, this is the, the seed to that longer-term conversation. We're going to be working toward that. Public Works Department is lead on developing all the asset management, but the intent is to eventually marry those two pieces. One is to develop a fund that's reserved specifically for tools and fleet, and one for building and facilities maintenance. And then eventually pair that with the life cycle of those assets, and then you'll be able to see those pieces. That's where we're headed. So we just really want to refine that.
A simpler on that is what you're going to see as part of your budget process, you will be allocating money to go into the replacement fund. So it becomes a proactive discipline upfront, and then that fund over time will then fund the projects, and it will become a fund. It will, again, so when you're looking at your budget priorities, the historical approach for the town for a number of years was to use Capital Projects Fund 50 as the funding source for almost everything. And then you moved, so we're refining it and trying to be more directive. And then the number that we're trying to reach will be based on the asset management system, based on the infrastructure that we have, and based on the rolling stock and the equipment, so that when we take a look at our fleet and we know X needs to be replaced in 20 years, what does it cost?
And I'll invite a further comment from the council, but I see our public is putting its coats on. Oh, so I wanted to, in case, have you had any questions about what we're talking about now? Are you just getting cold? Okay, okay. So any additional questions of Maria or Steve on this? Do you want to save them all for our next time?
I just want to make one comment. I strongly encourage us to look at something for our water enterprise funds. I've been saying this year after year after year, we've got $2 million plus in there. Just to have that sitting there, you know, not doing anything, you know, and just a glib comment, I think St. Helena might even want to borrow it, so...
Well, I'm just suggesting...
Maybe not even need a middleman in here. And I'm part serious, because they've made it very well-known that they're, they're going to go out to the bond market too, so...
And I think when we look at it, you know, for those of you that were on the council, when we acquired the asset, we were questioning with how much is enough. And I think now that we've gone through a six-year cycle, we have a better understanding. And certainly, how we utilize that for the water fund could have an impact on water rates. And we want to look at how do we maximize that or the infrastructure needs.
Well, that's what Joe just brought up tonight, is we're due for another review. And I think it does make sense that if it's not performing, but if we're saving it for the very reason that we're about to identify, which is rate structure adjustment, we may need to tap into that. But yeah, it's certainly something to keep an eye on. If it's not being effective like we want it to be, then we revisit it.
Just an opportunity, and we would come to you and present those options, and you can choose to keep doing what you're doing or do something different and just, you know, consider it that...
And I think the last few parts of your report here, we've kind of covered basically through the CIP report about tenants' courts and the, and the CIP budget itself. But are there any other questions from the council? No, I think, so you, you have the direction you need from us, the questions that have already been raised? Okay, great, thank you.
Can we just have an action to approve the special meeting dates that are in the second part of that staff report?
You mean, I have the option to vote against having these workshops?
Yeah.
It's hardly worth putting on your calendar.
I know, two is easy.
I know.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
And I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not using the vote thing.
Oh, so you want to voice? Okay, so Vice Mayor, motion seconded by Councilmember Dorman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Very good, thank you very much. Okay, we have the results of an interview and application for an opening on our food advisory council.
Yes.
The county's food advisory council.
Yes, the town has been recruiting for over the last year for a Yountville representative on the Napa County Local Food Advisory Council. And we received a application from Elizabeth Palmer. The town council interviewed her earlier this evening and unanimously recommended her to serve on that position. It's a four-year position. If there are no questions, I would ask that council take action to appoint Elizabeth Palmer with a term of office to expire February 1, 2021.
Is there a motion to that effect? We...
I make some motion.
And I second.
Thank you. At the moment, we will vote. Please vote. That is unanimous. That is unanimous. Thank you, and we look forward to having Elizabeth be on this county advisory council on our behalf. She obviously brought great experience and energy and knowledge about it already, so I think we were all very, very satisfied with, with her stepping forward. Staff information reports, general plan update. Are we going to solve all the issues of the general plan tonight? Go ahead.
Hardly. But I thought it would be a good opportunity to introduce, or to share with you some of the exciting updates with our Envision Yountville process that we just launched this last Thursday with the first of five in our speaker series. And on that evening, we introduced the community to the Envision Yountville process. Each of our team members was there to describe their role in the project, and we had a guest speaker, Jim Hyde of Urban Green in Healdsburg, and he shared information on sustainability and place-making and just observations for, for doing a general plan update. At that meeting, we had over 100 people in attendance, and we were really excited by the turnout we saw. Mayor, you yourself, were hauling out chairs to accommodate all these people. So the first one was a little bit of an unknown, knowing how many people would show up, and we were pleased that it was so great. And next time, we'll certainly plan for more. We are looking over the next couple of days to get out an email blast that goes to those who are in attendance and thanks them for coming, and invites them to share in a survey, which we'll do at each of the speakings, just to get their input and their participation. Here, I am showing you the Envision Yountville webpage that we launched a couple weeks ago, and to date, we've had over 350 unique visitors to the site, and those are individual visitors so far. We've received over 3,000 page views, and that means the number of pages on the site that are being viewed, and we have all of the ones across the top. More than 30 people so far have signed up for the e-notify that we'll be sending out in blast, and there were 72 that signed up at the meeting. So I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look at the Envision Yountville webpage, but it's a one-stop place to get everything, general plan, Envision Yountville. And as Michelle mentioned earlier, there's a direct link on the town's homepage that will take you to this, to this page, and this will be in place for 18 months or so, however long it takes for this process, and it'll stand alone to, to share information. So the first page tells a little bit about Envision Yountville. It's going to be the most up-to-date information on the process, and right now, we're really highlighting the speaker series, and it shows the dates that are coming with, and March 9th is our next meeting. This next tab is devoted to the speaker series itself, and it includes a little bit more of the information on the content of each of these meetings. The one on March 9th is about getting around town, and we'll look at mobility and transit and have a chance to discuss those issues. Let me scroll back up. We will be sharing information on this News and Events tab, and right now, we have the first speaker series, and we've posted these photos of the event here. As soon as our video is ready, we'll be posting it here as well, so that those who couldn't attend the event can come and view each of the five speaker series. We'll be adding other videos as well as this process moves forward, so those people have somewhere to go. The project library includes all relevant documents with the town and the county at present, including the 92 general plan. We have included our current housing and circulation elements. We have our climate action plan, and then county transportation plans as well. So this is a good place to stop, and this will be a place where we add documents as they're developed as part of this process. So as I mentioned, March 9th is the next speaker series, and then in early March, early to mid-March, we're hoping to get a meeting of the ad hoc committee, and the focus of that meeting will really be to help establish the procedure and the interview for the selection of the steering committee. And what I can say is, following the meeting of last week, we've heard from a lot of people who are interested, so I'm hoping we'll have a, a large application block to pull from. So anyway, we're excited. We think we had an amazing kickoff event, and it's up and going.
There's a very good presentation that you all made, you being one of the many that were in front of the stage or onstage, and so that was a very compelling starting point. So I think we're encouraging people to continue as opposed to scaring them off, thinking that this was not going to be an interactive, welcoming kind of dialogue. So congratulations to you and the rest of the team.
One other thing, people are a little confused. You can go on this link and do the e-signup, but then they signed up when they walked in, and they don't know if they have to sign up twice, or I think the perception is that people, anybody who put their email down on that list, that you're going to connect them here. So maybe we can clarify that next time to everybody or...
Okay. Everyone who gave us their name and email will be part of our list. We're referencing that against the town's e-notify list in general. We just want to get the word out to as many people as possible.
Right, but you're not going to actually be signing them up on this e-notified list if they signed up when they walked in the door.
I think the point is that if they provided you an email address, you can send them an email saying if you want to sign up for e-notifier.
I was going to say, yeah, if you're going to send them a survey, say, did you go here and do that?
Okay.
The town, we don't have the kind of authority to sign them up for e-notifier.
No, but they think that's what's going to, they're confused about exactly what they signed up for and...
That's what they signed up for. So they'll be getting those e-notify as part of the general plan process.
Okay, so we are doing that list. We are using that list and then doing this.
And adding these people to it. And it's for Envision Yountville stuff only. They didn't have to specifically identify that.
So the sign-in sheet they were signing said that that's what it was for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I thought that was just an attendance sheet, and that you were then adding this component, but you're saying it was very clear?
They'll double-check that.
I think this is to my point. Maybe we'll make this a little clearer at the next, or just maybe we say it, and say it again, and say it again, and just...
Yeah. Let's keep repeating.
Yeah.
Okay.
What it is and what isn't.
First meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
The great thing is, we had so many people sign up and participate. Any other comment on that? Okay, any other informational reports from staff? No? All right. I will go through very quickly, and if others have meeting reports, Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, we heard a report on some bank erosion problems up in Calistoga and St. Helena due to the heavy rain and water and debris flows. They are trying to address those as quickly and effectively as possible. Also, jumping down to the Napa Valley Transportation Authority meeting, Calistoga Mayor Chris Canning was elected as the vice chair, replacing former Napa City Councilmember Mary Leros. Highway 29 resurfacing will be, is being scheduled for this summer between North Napa and Yountville, so that stretch of Highway 29, south of town, and they are anticipating mostly nighttime work to minimize traffic impacts. We heard an update on efforts to secure rights of way and a final route for the Vine Trail between St. Helena and Calistoga, but there are some minor and not-so-miner details still to be worked out, as I'm sure Councilmember Dorman heard as well. And then we also heard a report about an express bus analysis, analysis that's happening now to figure out how to improve the service delivery on the express bus lines, because they have a very low rating for on-time and availability of service. So that's all being looked at by MBTA. I don't know if you have anything more to add to that?
No.
Okay.
There you go.
Then quickly moving on, do we have any report on Upper Valley Waste Management?
We're meeting next Monday.
Okay. The other reports and announcements I wanted to highlight, I did present a proclamation recognizing February is Black History Month to the residents of the Veterans Home, and acknowledged the efforts put forth by the resident planning committee that put lunch and some other programming together for the month of February. I, let's see, I wanted to just make sure that people remember that Yountville Live is coming up, which includes Taste of Yountville. That's on March 16th through the 19th, and tickets are available at yountvillive.com. And I also attended a visit to the Veterans Home that was hosted by the Tug McGraw Foundation that included retired Admiral and his wife, along with a retired Navy SEAL who only has one name, doesn't go by a last name, but he was especially interesting. He and another former SEAL have co-founded an Elite Performance Institute in, I think it was Virginia Beach, for military, and they're extending it to civilian athletes from high school age and up to professional level of athletes. And they had some high school kids from Napa Valley come and listen to the Admiral and the former SEAL about performance and nutrition and wellness and all of those things. So it was really interesting to see the multi-generational dialogue going on there. That's all I have. Are there any other meeting reports or announcements? Oh, I will be going to Lowdy for two days to represent us at the League of California Cities Executive Board Retreat. I'll be reporting back out on that when I, at our next meeting. I believe that's it for our open session items. Do we, we covered this earlier, do we not, we don't anticipate reportable action out of our closed session, is that correct, Gary?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn to closed session, and our next regular meeting is 6:00 PM on March 7th.